I can see you, Mayor, and here.
Oh, good. You can see her on TV?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, I think we have everyone here now. Good to go.
Good to go. Thank you. Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. It's 5:32 PM. Sorry, folks, we're having a little technical difficulty. Welcome back from vacation. And Madam Clerk, would you please establish a forum for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember McPherson?
Here.
And of course, Mayor Heding is here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. With that, normally I would move directly into a moment of silence, but I would like us to contemplate during our moment of silence before our pledge, the recent loss of Supervisor Adam Hill, a close friend and political companion in this county. It was announced this past week that Supervisor Hill, 54 years old, had died. It was a sadness, according to the county, that they'd been informed that Supervisor Adam Hill has passed away. The whole county wrote in a statement, "This is shocking and tremendously painful news." While we are unaware of the details at this time, we ask everyone to let the proper authorities do their jobs and investigate, and please respect the family's privacy at this time. Although Supervisor Hill was not our district supervisor, many of us on the city council and within the city worked closely with Adam on a number of issues over the years. Hill was first elected to the San Luis Obispo County Board of Supervisors in 2008. Prior to that, he taught literature and writing at Cal Poly University. During his tenure in office, Supervisor Hill was known as an advocate for mental health and homelessness issues. More recently, he was an active participant in the ongoing talks around the shuttering of Diablo Canyon Nuclear Plant and the economic impact that that would have on our whole region. One of his earliest endeavors as a supervisor was his work with the Slow County Food Coalition Bank, the nonprofit group that he worked with tirelessly until he began facing his own mental health hardships this past winter. Adam was known as an individual who was passionate for the disenfranchised, the poor, the needy, the homeless, and he advocated for that every chance that he got. I worked closely with Supervisor Hill on a number of issues, including early tenure on the Integrated Waste Management Board, and more recently, as a representative for the city on the Air Pollution Control District Board, where we worked closely on major pollution issues in the Napomo Basin. Adam Hill was a brave individual who was not afraid to speak openly about his own mental health issues, and I am deeply saddened by the loss of not only one who advocated for his district, but did much to advocate to advance the economic and primary values and goals for the City of Morro Bay, often being an advocate for us with regard to economic development, most recently with regard to our wind farm, as an advocate there, meeting relentlessly with legislators to try to move this initiative forward. My heart is broken, and I am sad to lose a friend, and I would just like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of our past supervisor, Adam Hill. Thank you. With that, if we could have our flag, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, good evening and welcome. I'll move now to Mayor and Councilmember reports. I had one opportunity that I wanted to present to the community. I recently had the opportunity to meet with the new principal at Los Osos Middle School, and they are beginning a new program called College Bound Today. This is a program that seeks 15 community volunteers to work with 40 eighth-grade students at Los Osos Middle School, starting in September of 2020. These mentors will meet with their students on Saturday mornings, once each month during the school year, either via Zoom or in person, depending upon the pandemic restrictions, to help guide students in taking the following important steps. One, to explore students' current interests and their post-secondary college and career goals. Two, to help students complete the Loam's four-year plan by selecting their high school courses for grades nine through 12. Three, to explore after-school and summertime extracurricular activities. Four, discuss college application processes and assist students with that. Five, conduct mock job interviews. Six, review and discuss students' writing abilities. Seven, accompany students on field trips. And eight, explore career opportunities for these young people. The qualifications, if you're interested in being a mentor to assist in this exciting program for young people, one, you must have graduated from college, or at least completed some college courses. Second, you must be committed to work with students for at least two years. Three, you must be willing to submit to a TB test or life scan and a criminal background check. And four, we also are looking for mentors who are fluent in Spanish. You don't have to be fluent in Spanish, but that is an added incentive that would assist the program to move forward. The time commitment for mentors is to work for at least for two years, starting in the eighth grade with selected students, continuing through the ninth grade at Morro Bay High School. The commitment on the part of mentors is to participate in monthly meetings on Saturdays from 9:00 to 12:30. That's once a month, 9:00 to 12:30. It's a two-year commitment. And if you are interested, you can contact me directly at my email, at the city's website, or contact Los Osos Middle School. We'd love to have you volunteer and be mentor to these children that need us in these times of decisions that they're making for those that are college bound. Thank you. With that, I'll turn to Councilmember McPherson. Any reports for you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to alert everyone to the fact that there will be a Planning Commission meeting on August 18th, and the topic is going to be a first look at our new short-term vacation rental ordinance draft, which Mayor and I facilitated an ad hoc committee that met 12 times before COVID hit, and I want to thank all of the members of that committee for all of their hard work. And if you are interested, please check on the planning, on our website, and it is currently available there, the draft ordinance, and plan on participating in the Planning Commission on August 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, any announcements, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Regarding trash, everyone has been talking about trash. I must say that we've had lots of visitors, more than anybody's expected, I think, in Morro Bay for some time. A lot of people with takeout food, a lot more trash than we're used to be handling. Want to thank the Public Works Department for putting out additional trash cans, hiring additional staff and so forth to manage this new issue, this new problem that I don't think anyone could have anticipated. I had been in Southern California on business, starting in Santa Monica and northward, and I stopped at every beach last week to see if it was just something unique to Morro Bay, or if, in fact, this is a more common experience, and I don't know if it's any consolation, but every beach I stopped at was absolutely swarmed with people. Overflowing trash cans were very common, and all I can say is that the beaches become a great respite for people who have been cooped up in their houses or been taking care of their kids, working from home. It's one of the few places that people can go to for relief. So it appears to be somewhat of a trend, at least in Southern California through Central California. And along those lines, I reached out to some friends of mine at Cal Poly to talk about what we can do in Morro Bay to decrease the use of non-compostable takeout materials and move towards a more zero-waste program. So I've contacted the program manager at Cal Poly, who's in charge of zero waste, and I'm going to be working with her in local restaurants and try and figure a way that we can at least make sure everyone is using compostable materials and possibly reduce waste reduction at the source. If you're interested in helping me with this, reach out to me. I would like to put a small team together who's interested in this and see what we can do with this particular issue. That is my announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for visiting the beaches along the way. That must have been an exciting road trip.
Yes, it was quite a hardship, I must say.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, sir, any announcements?
Yes. Excuse me. I'd like to recognize tonight one of our special citizens, Linda Winters, for her contributions to the city. Linda stands up at our council meetings, at least until we entered the COVID era. She stands up for the 1,000 Morro Bay residents who live in our mobile home parks. She advocates here at the council level and at the state level with the governor and the legislature to remind all of us that mobile home parks provide affordable housing for thousands of people in our state. And Linda, on a special mission, helped staff and council last year to expand our utility discount program so that we could include mobile home and apartment residents who don't have separate water meters. So I want to thank Linda for her advocacy. Second item, at the Slocog meeting last week, the board corrected a funding omission that was made by the state during CARES Act programming. Morro Bay was left out of the first round of transit grants because we are not an urbanized transit funding recipient. We are a rural transit funding recipient. So Slocog staff recommended programming $105,000 through the Rural Transit Fund Program to cover transit impacts from COVID-19, and the board approved that. So this brings the City of Morro Bay into conformity with the rest of the county, helping to recover from the pandemic impacts to our transit system. And I want to say that Supervisor Hill attended that Slocog meeting on Wednesday, the day before he passed away, and I too worked with Adam on the Slocog board. He was always supportive of Morro Bay. He was a big supporter of our aquarium project, and he always told me how much he enjoyed coming to Morro Bay. So I too, like the mayor, will miss Adam very much. My last item, I will have office hours this coming Saturday at an outdoor bench near the giant chessboard from 9:00 o'clock until 10:00 o'clock. Anyone, everyone is invited to come by, and we can talk about anything you want. I do ask that you please wear face covering and be a mask hero. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Davis. Thank you for your advocacy at Slocog for Morro Bay and making sure that we were included in COVID-19 funds. That's significant, and thank you for that. With that, Councilmember Addis, please, any announcements?
Yes, I do want to thank staff and the public for being mask heroes. I'm glad that Councilmember Davis mentioned that. It's been wonderful to see those photos online, and I think it makes a lot of residents feel more comfortable to know that there's so many people starting to wear masks out there. On August 21st, I hope to have Chief Knuckles on Fridays at 4:00 with me. So that's a Zoom call that's open to the public, and he's confirmed unless he's stolen away by what we hope is not a need from the California wildfires that might occur. So August 21st at 4:00 PM, you can interact with Chief Knuckles and hear about how he's handling COVID, as well as the wildfire season and all things Morro Bay. And then I want to thank you, Mayor, for that tribute to Supervisor Hill. He was a huge advocate and friend to many of us and never stopped from lending his hand to somebody in need. So very much appreciate that, and his family is in my heart as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Appreciate that. With that, I'll turn to Mr. Collins for City Manager Report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember and community members. Just touch briefly on a few of the items that have already been raised by councilmembers. The mask campaign, the Mask Hero campaign has been alluded to, and what we're really trying to do there is to encourage the positive behavior we want to see in our community and see more folks wearing masks, and reward them with swag and other things, and recognition on our social media pages for doing the right thing. And we have seen more people wearing masks, which is great, and we do have a lot more work to do in that regard. Councilmember Heller did refer to the trash issue, which has been a monumental task. It's always been a challenge, but nothing like what we have witnessed this year with a lot of people choosing either to go to the mountains or the beaches. It seems to be where people are vacationing this summer more than ever. And with that combination of the takeout-only options for dining, our trash system is just completely overwhelmed, and we are so grateful for all the volunteers who are helping pick up litter, as well as the staff hours put out over the weekend to address this, as well as the good work of bringing in more dumpsters and trash cans by staff to try to address this issue. So we're doing the best we can, and we'll continue to add resources where we can, despite the financial impacts we're experiencing with COVID-19. In addition to those issues, we're also experiencing a lot more folks coming to town in RVs and maybe not staying in RV camps and parking in the waterfront areas or neighborhoods. And so we are going to increase our enforcement of those and are bringing out more sign-ish so it's clear that overnight camping is not allowed. In addition, we just began our parking study, which we discussed during the budget process, which will be paid out of the Parking and Lou funds. They began their counts, data collection last week to get a peak season look, and then they'll do a similar study during the off-season and then bring forward recommendations, probably to be what happened in the city council sometime towards the end of this year, early next year. As Councilmember McPherson alluded to, the Short-Term Vacation Rule Committee completed their work, and their work will be presented to the Planning Commission on next Tuesday, and the Tourism Business Improvement District next Thursday as well. And the Tourism Business Improvement District Board will also take a hard look at how we are conducting ourselves internally as it relates to tourism, as we put a pause on most of our activity, because now is not the time to market to people. It's given us the opportunity to look at how we do marketing and what's the best path forward into the future, and so the board will be looking at recommendations from another committee that did some hard work over the last month to come up with recommendations. So that's my update, and happy to answer any questions related to that information.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Appreciate that very much, and if there are no questions, I'll go ahead and turn to our esteemed attorney, City Attorney, Chris Niermeyer, for a closed session report. Any closed session report, Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to public comment. This is a general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay and would like to comment on now, or for any other general items that are pertinent to the city that you'd like to comment on. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N-2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public, by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for the meeting. Please also note that instructions are on the agenda for those who wish to link in via Zoom, or if you'd like to call in. There is also information that will be placed on the screen by our city clerk that will give you the instructions for that. That would be the option on both of those. You would need to raise your hand so that we could recognize you and allow you to make public comment. Again, this is public comment for items that are on the agenda for which you cannot stay and/or other items you'd like to speak to. With that, I will open up public comment.
Page two. Participants have their hands raised, and the seat can allow the first to speak, please.
Betty Winholz, you're online.
Do we have a speaker in here? Speaker, you may need to unmute. You should be able to provide public comment now.
Ms. Watson, is it, this is Betty Winholz. Is it me?
We can hear you, Betty. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. During my appeal of the Atascadero Road Project during the last city council meeting, my assumption that this project was for low-income people was rightfully challenged, since unbeknownst to me, it was for extremely low and very low income. As you know, it's not my way to make up facts, but to present evidence, so I'd like to make a few comments. First, I based my written appeal on the June Planning Commission staff report. The project description stated, "The project is a 35-unit affordable apartment project with one-, two-, three-bedroom apartments, deemed restricted and available to tenants at or below low-income level. Therefore, I hooked the term 'low income' to the term 'affordable.' Second, I based my appeal presentation on the July City Council Public Hearing Report. The project is described in there as a 35-affordable housing project, and that was it. The term 'affordable' is nebulous to me, so I checked for definitions online. In addition to the Slow County Department of Planning income sheet that I sent to you, I also found the following references that made me feel secure in my perspective that low income and affordable were simultaneous. One, there was a description in the economic times that stated, though different countries have different definitions, affordable housing by and large should address housing needs of the low and middle income. And then from a rental source, many apartments and homes advertise as affordable housing, usually for renters with higher incomes and are different from low-income housing. And then a third source is from the New America Organization, and it states, "Affordable housing as a concept is frequently misunderstood, shrouded in many of the misconceptions as our other policies aimed at helping low-income people." So what I realized was that the real and complete project description was found in the conceptual review that was presented to the Planning Commission back in November of 2019. It did not occur to me to go back that far and look at that report. The description was not carried forward into the June and July reports, and it read this, "The applicant has proposed a 35-unit affordable apartment project with one-, two- three-bedroom apartments, primarily for extremely low-income tenants and very low-income tenants, with one low-income tenant for the, I assume, the manager." So I want to acknowledge my mistake. It was an honest one, and I would encourage its staff reports to be more complete in the future, carrying information forward. I would just like to close by saying, knowing now that the residents of this project are extremely low and very low income, I believe the call for elevators is even stronger. It's a call for environmental justice. Because they cannot afford a more expensive place, tenants will be risking their lives because first responders, in cases of a medical emergency, will not be able to quickly and smoothly exit them from a third floor with no elevator. Your vote to not require an elevator did not uphold, I believe, the general plan requirement that you protect the health and safety of our people. And in the same thi-
Thank you, Betty. That's all. Your three minutes are up. You want 10 more seconds? Go ahead and finish?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Betty, for your transparency and the correction that you made, and thank you for your passionate statement. Appreciate that. Next public speaker, general public comment?
Next public comment, if you had your hand raised.
Speaker, you'll need to unmute yourself if you're muted.
Is there a speaker with their hand raised that would like to provide public comment?
Madam Clerk, can we see hands raised?
Yes, I believe it's Mr. Sedley, and he will need to unmute himself so that we can hear his public comment.
Dan, can you unmute yourself? Dan, can you hear me? It's Mayor. You'll need to unmute yourself to speak, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Dan. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. I have two questions. Both are in regards to the paid parking study. My first question is, who is conducting the paid parking study? And my second question is, what is the cost of the paid parking study? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Next public comment? Any further hands raised, Madam Clerk?
No more hands raised.
Okay. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Collins, could you address Mr. Sedley's questions regarding the parking study, the firm that will be doing it, and the cost?
Sure. This item has been on the city council's goals list for a couple of years, and now we're getting around to it. I looked at several different firms to get a good price. Walker Consultants was selected. They had the best price, and based on reviews from the City of Bismarck Beach, as well as City of Slow, of views in the past, felt comfortable moving forward with them, even though they had a substantially lower rate compared to some of the other folks I reached out to. That will be about $49,000 contract, paid out exclusively from the Parking and Lou Fund, so it does not affect the general fund, which pays for police, fire, parks and rec, and other general fund obligations. So it's not going to address that. So this is what these funds are used for, and depending on what it comes forward in terms of recommendations, it could include- terms of recommendations, it could include paid parking, which would more than pay for the consultant study. But it's important to have that study under our belts to know what our parking situation is, as well as make justifications, not only to our community and city council that paid parking may be necessary, but also to the Coastal Commission, who ultimately would have to approve such a use of parking.
Great, Scott. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. With that, we will move to Item A, our consent agenda. I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment for any members of the public that would like to speak to the consent agenda items only. Public comment is now open, once again, for consent agenda items only. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody in the queue?
There are two with their hands raised. I believe Ms. Winholtz was first.
Thank you, Betty Winholtz.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. I'd like to comment on A5 and A7. A5 has to do with the money and this cash that's being reserved for paying on the debts or bills of our sewer plant that's being built. And I had asked the question, how much money are we talking about? Because the report didn't really say. Now, the mayor wrote back and gave me some monies that we are using, and it looked to me, if I'm accurate, Mr. Mayor, that it's around, what, maybe just shy of $30 million that we have that kind of cash flow and maybe 16, 18, 19? No, not even that much, maybe around 20 million. And I just thought the public would like to know that. If you think I'm accurate, that's my comment unless anyone wants to comment further on that. And then in terms of A7, this was in regard to the cutbacks, not cutbacks, the concession salaries that the staff is making till the end of the year. And I would like to know why step increases are still being allowed when the intent of salary concessions is to hold the line so we don't get further into debt. And then I'm assuming that the reason we're not making those salary concessions permanent is maybe something that someone could respond to. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next public comment for items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Sedley, have his hand raised?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to also comment and bring up question on Item A7. In looking at A7 and the schedule, the salary schedule listed for both the pay cut, the temporary pay cut period, and then the resuming of the pay cut period, it looked like there was at least one bargaining unit that did not participate in the temporary salary reduction. If I'm correct, the city has a slogan of something to the effect of rock solid together. I may be slightly off, but the idea is the same and that we're all in this together. And I'm wondering, not that the city represents any employee bargaining unit, but I'm wondering the reason why at least one, maybe more, bargaining, employee bargaining units did not participate, and if there's a way to further rectify that. I'm proud of the bargaining units that did understand the city's extreme dire financial dilemma and did participate, but it creates, to me, it creates a divide in our rock solid together identity that one or more bargaining units did not participate. Secondly, I too want to know why none of these, no salary or job-related concerns are permanent. We were in this financial dilemma before COVID. This was being researched long before COVID, at least months, and cowpers being the rope around our necks that it is and continues to be and likely will continue to be. The only way to deal with that is to cut the amount of cowpers' jobs and cowpers that we pay. And so I'm wondering why there is no permanency in any of the cuts. If there's an answer for either of my questions, I would appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dan. Madam Clerk, are there other members wishing to speak on public comment for the items on the consent agenda?
I do not see any of the hands raised.
Okay, and thank you.
Oh, pardon me, there is one more.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, I believe you would like to provide public comment?
Yes, I'm just available to answer any questions about our lease transfer.
Is this Roger Anderson? Roger, is that you?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought-
Yes. We didn't get the announcement of who you were. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead, Roger.
I just want to be available and also to thank the city staff, especially the Harbor Department, for 55 years of a relationship with the city our family's had. So thank you, and I'm available.
And our condolences for the loss of your family member, Roger.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there other public comments for items on the consent agenda?
That is it.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to council. I will go ahead and pull A5 and A7 to allow the answers that the callers for public comment made. Any other items to pull council members? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve, entertain a motion to approve all consent agenda items except for A5 and A7.
I'll move to approve all consent agenda items except for A5 and A7.
I'll second. Motion by Councilmember Addis to approve all consent items except for A5 and A7, second by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion? Not a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson? Councilmember McPherson?
Councilmember McPherson, are you muted?
Councilmember McPherson, it appears you are muted.
Marlis, are you there? Can you unmute yourself?
We can move ahead with Mayor Hennig.
Yes.
Motion will have passed 401.
Thank you. With that, I'll pull A5. Thank you, Ms. Winholtz, for asking questions about the local agency investment fund. As you'll note in the agenda packet on page 42 of 123, at present, we have $17.4 million at a coupon interest rate of 2.03%. Specifically, Ms. Winholtz was trying to get a breakdown of what funds those dollars were comprised of, how much in the general, of that was general fund dollars, how much was water and/or sewer fund or other dollars. This is taken from page 58 of our budget document, so this is approximate because this is only a snapshot in time, but it should line up fairly closely with the existing number. Approximately $16.2 million of the city's cash balance is allocated to accumulation funds of the water and sewer accounts, with an additional $600,000 allocated between the sewer and water replacement equipment funds. We also have less than about $600,000 in the utility discount program. $2.2 million is in the general fund emergency reserve. And if you look down at the money management accounts, approximately $5.4 million is from the general fund emergency reserve account. In addition to that, about $1.7 million is in our internal service fund. So by and large, the bulk of that LAIF investment fund is secondary to accumulated funds that are being set aside for use in cash flow payments for the water and sewer program at a very reasonable interest rate right now of 2.03%. So with that answer, I will go ahead and move approval of Item A-5. Second. Okay, a motion by Mayor Hennig to approve Agenda Item A5, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further questions or discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Where could we find this information? Where can the public find this information if we want?
If you go to, yes, thank you, Councilmember Heller. If you go to morrbayca.gov, which is the city's website, and you go to the Document Center and go to View, the 2020-2021 Proposed Operating and Capital Budgets, it is on page 58 of the document. So once again, morrbayca.gov, go to the Document Center, pull up the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, and you will find it on page 58 of that document.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hennig?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
She's having trouble reconnecting. She texted me, so.
Okay.
No, she's there. Marlis, are you back yet? So we'll go ahead.
Okay, and the motion carries 401.
Okay, thank you. Then I will move to Item A-7 and ask Mr. Collins or Ms. Swanson to address the issue of raised by Ms. Winholtz and then also a secondary issue raised by Mr. Sedley. First issue, why are these step increases continued to be allowed, given the fact that there has been a reduction in salary for a number of bargaining units? Number two, why are these reductions not permanent? And number three, why is the fire department not participating, and what is the current status of that? Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Sure. So as was noted, yeah, rock solid together was our mantra and our continued mantra through COVID and extending beyond city operations out into the community and our business community as well. About 90% of our employees have taken pay cuts going through the end of this calendar year. That's when the contracts were negotiated, so it goes to that point, which point we'll be back to the table discussing kind of the future. So we did a short-term deal because we really didn't know what to anticipate with COVID. So much was fluid at that time. It was early on in understanding, and we're still learning quite a bit. So it's best to sort of take these things in steps and not make super-long-term commitments without having really good information on your side. So that's why there was a short-term view on that. We obviously don't talk about negotiations that are ongoing, just to state that they are ongoing with the other bargaining group that was referenced. And regarding step increases, understand that sentiment, though it's important to understand the step increases are based on merit or at the top step. And so those employees who are new to the organization, who have earned raises, would in some respects face inequities if they weren't able to receive the step increases that they've earned. So it's a philosophy and definitely a choice, and that was the choice we made, that we wanted to honor those who have earned their raises. So that explains the step increase being retained. And it's also important to note that, this was discussed at the last meeting, that our average annual increase in costs have been 0.5% over the last roughly 10 years, far lower than the average CPI and far lower than most other cities in the state. So we're definitely doing our best to manage our costs, and our employees are playing, paying, playing a significant role in that, and that is probably why we are far behind most of our local agencies in terms of how we rate in terms of compensation with those agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And let me just reaffirm my thanks as Mayor for those employee groups that have participated in the cutbacks during this very difficult time and very financially challenging time for the city. I want to reaffirm my thanks to the bargaining units that have given up concessions, to the department managers, department heads, and senior staff that also have taken pay cuts during this pandemic-induced recessionary fix that we find ourselves in. So with that, I will go ahead and move approval of A7. Second. Okay, motion by Mayor Hennig to approve Item A7, second by Councilmember Davis. Any comments or discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. The figures in there, are those numbers exclusive of benefits, or is that the, are those salaries reflect our benefits included in those numbers?
Ms. Collins?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Good question, Councilmember Heller. Yeah, those are the salaries, and that's exclusive of benefits.
And about what kind of labor burden are we looking at in general in terms of benefits?
Yeah, a bit of a sliding scale depending, you know, what level of per your at, but anywhere from 25 to 40%, sometimes a little higher. But Dana probably has a better response to that, but it's typically the average.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. And with that, I will ask for roll call vote, please.
We are trying to reconnect Councilmember McPherson. Hopefully, she can get back in and participate. In the meantime, Mayor Hennig?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes, I'm back.
Wonderful. Thank you. Motion carries 501.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Technical difficulties. That's what happens when you're off for two weeks, folks. Happens to all of us. Thank you.
My computer just absolutely froze. I could do nothing, so we finally had to shut it down and start over. So here we go.
Great. Well, welcome back. That takes us to Item Number C, first of our business items, C-1. This is a review of the WRF Quarterly Update Report, discuss the Citizens Finance Committee, or CFAC, role in water reclamation facility review, with additional responsibilities as directed by council on January 28, 2020. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Casares.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here. Can you guys see me? Doesn't look like it.
No, we can't, but that's, it looks like your gutter from outside of the building is showing up.
Yeah, hold on really quickly. I'm sorry.
Sure.
There we go.
There you are. Yes, thanks. Welcome, Eric.
It was jarring. Thank you. Thank you for having me here this evening, Eric Casares, the WRF Program Manager. I provided a, developed a brief presentation to, one, review the quarterly report, and then to also go over some progress on the project construction today. then to also go over some progress on the project construction to date, so we can jump in to that.
Mr. Casares, is that on the website or available as a deck for us to look at while you're presenting?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll pull it up on the share screen as we're presenting here.
Okay.
So can everybody see the presentation, the intro slide?
Yes.
Okay, great. Again, thank you guys for having me here this evening to talk about item C1, which is a review of our quarterly update report for Q4 of FY 1920. Recommendation here this evening is that you receive the WRF quarterly update report. And as I mentioned, I just wanted to go over a couple of slides here and talk a little bit about the general project status. So on this slide here, you'll see just the general timeline of the WRF construction progress to date. This here is, is the, we began construction in March, on March 20 of 2020. We actually issued the construction notice proceed on that date, which is a Friday. Construction proceeded on that following Monday. We started off with, as number of the environmental documents that are directing our project had indicated, we had a number of best management practices for stormwater and a number of mitigations that we needed to get in place before we really got started with construction in earnest. That started right away there at the end of March and going into the beginning of April. We mobilized the, one, the construction trailer for the contractor, the DB team, as well as the program management team and our construction management folks in early April, and jumped right into earthwork. One of the items that's discussed in the quarterly report and has been discussed as a group here over the last couple of months is the soil slip that occurred on May 5. And so that was occurring while we were performing earthwork. We've also talked a lot about the stream bed alteration agreement with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We received that stream bed alteration agreement on July 13, allowing us to proceed uninhibited with construction across the entire site. And then in late July and early August, we, in addition to starting construction within the area affected by the stream bed alteration agreement, we also began with concrete for several water bearing structures, as well as starting to put in piping, which we'll go over here in a second. I did want to note, we have a master spreadsheet that we maintain internally, and we also produce quarterly reports that go to the funding agencies, i.e. the EPA with WIFIA and with the State Board with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. We just finished our first quarterly report for our first quarter of construction, and that report went to those two agencies. And one of the things that they're most concerned about is that we are abiding by all of the mitigations and avoidance measures that are outlined in a number of different documents. So we have a spreadsheet that we use to track that helps us put together that quarterly report, and that contains roughly 125 items that we are monitoring almost continuously. And they come from a number of various sources. So I just wanted to point out, in addition to actually building the project, we've got a number of different things that we need to pay attention to and adhere to. And we start all the way back, and these are kind of in chronological order, but we've got our in-draft environmental document that includes all of our mitigation measures, various mitigation measures for cultural resources, biological reef sources, noise, and all of those things that we have to abide by. But in addition, we also have our coastal development permit that has a number of different, additional mitigations that we need to abide by. So we have a number of items that we are tracking that link directly to our coastal development permit. We also have our programmatic agreement that was required because we're receiving federal funds that we negotiated with the state historic preservation office. Again, a number of different items as it relates to cultural resources that we need to abide by. We have our final biological opinion that we negotiated with the United States Department of the Interior, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services back at the beginning of 2020. Again, that's mostly specific to the California red-legged frog for all intents and purposes for the water reclamation facility. We have a naturally occurring asbestos permit that we have with the San Luis Obispo County Air Pollution Control District, so a number of different things that we need to abide by there as it relates to the natural occurring asbestos at the site. We have our stormwater pollution prevention plan, or SWIP as we affectionately call it. Again, monitoring water quality from stormwater events and a number of also BMPs that we need to abide by for stormwater. And most recently, we have our stream bed alteration agreement that we received from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And we can, if anyone has any questions about the specifics of that agreement, I can answer those questions after the presentation. So just to give you guys a flair of, excuse me, a flavor of what we are tracking, our team is tracking on a, on a daily basis as it pertains to the construction that's occurring out there at South Bay Boulevard. A lot of people have asked about the soil slip, and I thought I would just bring back and show a picture of this soil slip issue that we're dealing with. I will let folks know that we have received a draft estimate of the cost impacts from the soil slip. Again, we've talked about this a couple times. Really, the discussion that we are going to be having, or we've already started having with the design build team, is the merit of that claim that they've made for additional costs for the GMP. Again, our position is that the city should not be responsible for those additional costs. But this will give you an idea of the roughly 15,000 cubic foot soil slip that occurred at the site. Give you a little frame of reference for size there. In terms of site progress, this figure is, or excuse me, this picture is a couple of weeks old. It was taken just before the CFAC meeting several weeks ago, and I've got some pictures that show more recent construction as late as Friday of last week. Just to orient everybody on the site, you've got the lay-down area where the construction trailer sit. A number of you have been out to, out to the site, so you've got some idea of the way the site lays out. There, the head of the plant is where the construction trailers are. At the bottom right-hand corner, we have our water bearing structures, of which we have two, and I'll show those in a little bit more detail here in a second. And then we have the erosional feature, or what we are calling, or have been calling the canyon area. This was the area that we were dealing with, with CDFW and the stream bed alteration agreement. And this shows the work that immediately started once we received that stream bed alteration agreement there in the canyon area. That's the area where we're placing a lot of the fill that's being generated from the other earthwork activities around the site. So we obtained the agreement from CDFW on July 13. Again, just a close-up of the construction happening in this area. I won't get into too much detail, but it's not as simple as just stockpiling the dirt that we have from the other areas of the site in this area. We have an underdrain system that we need to put in to be able to manage stormwater in the site, and that's some of the things that you can see going on in this picture. There's kind of a central collection pipe that runs down the center of that erosional feature, which is what we're showing in this picture. This picture was taken a couple of weeks ago when forming and placement of rebar was beginning on the two water bearing structures. Again, the one to the left is the sledge holding tanks, and the other one to the right is really the workhorse for the plant, which is our BNR basins, our biological nutrient removal basins. And this picture here is, was taken at the end of last week and shows concrete being placed in the sledge holding tanks. You can see all the rebar has been placed on the bottom mats, rebar for the foundations of those structures. And we fast forward a little bit to earlier this week, and you can see concrete being worked here, and this is the BNR basins themselves. So that structure there, there to the right. Again, these were taken just within the last couple of days and show some of the concrete work that's gone out on out there. So a lot of the work that you can see from the road is the earthwork, but want to let you know that we got things going on there in the back corner, and we're starting to place many, many tons of concrete for two of the most critical structures in the treatment plant. We are also starting our pipeline work. So the pipelines, this is an extension of essentially of the conveyance pipelines that are being, that are going to be put in the city, and this shows the pipelines coming up through kind of the administration or operations building side of the plant. These are HDPE pipes that are fusion welded. You can kind of see it in that picture. That's the fusion welding machine. I believe there's two fusion welding machines on site currently. That's one of, one of two of those. So it's not just earthwork anymore. We have concrete and piping that's going into the site. So that, that was just a brief overview of some of the things that are, that are going on out at the treatment plant site, and then I'll jump into the quarterly report overview. I like to start every quarterly report presentation with just a quick slide that describes the procedures that we've put in place for reporting to both CFAC and the city council. Again, a single report is produced for both CFAC and city council each month. Monthly reports are expanded every third month. This is one of those that happens at the corner where we do a presentation to both CFAC and council. Every quarter, we do a budget reconciliation that happens, and so we relook at the budget based on changes in the project or how we're tracking in regards to our spending patterns. And then on an annual basis, again, we also look at the budget as well as the schedule, and we rebase line the schedule annually. We keep all of our old schedules that are from previous years, but we do look at and benchmark ourselves against a new baseline schedule, and that occurs at the end of every fiscal year. In terms of just a high-level summary of the project status, the project budget was rebase lined at 130.6 million. There was a very small change from the previous quarter. In Q3 of FY 1920, we saw an increase in, in the project budget as a result of a number of PCOs that were taken to, to the city council and approved by city council. And the schedule has been rebase lined, so the TSO compliance deadline, as I like to point to, is February 28 of 2023, and we are now expecting the water reclamation facility substantial completion date of September 2, 2022. So that WRF substantial completion date is, signifies our compliance with, with the TSO. So we're tracking about six months ahead of the TSO compliance deadline. The previous WRF substantial completion date was June 15, 2022, so that slipped a little bit because of some of the issues that we've been discussing here with the CDFW. And the baseline WRF of substantial completion date was November 11 of 2021. So roughly about a 10-month slip from where we first estimated when we were discussing bringing in the design build team on board. And I'm sure everybody's familiar with the reasons for some of those delays. This slide here shows the budget history. As I mentioned, we rebase, or excuse me, we reconcile the budget on a quarterly basis and look and re-project out on a quarterly basis, and then, as I mentioned, we rebase line annually. So since we started doing this back at the end of a calendar year 2019, you can see the, or excuse me, we base lined in the middle of the year of 2018, in June 2018. That was our original baseline of 126 million, and then you can see the quarterly budget reconciliations that occurred starting at the beginning of calendar, or calendar year 2019, and then every quarter since then. And as you can see, here's where we currently sit at 130.6 million. So the new baseline budget summary of the water reclamation facility. So as you remember from the last budget that we put together and some of the discussions that we had, because of the timing of a number of the PCOs, we asked to move or increase the project budget and shift a large amount of additional funds into contingency to be able to cover these PCOs. So one of the big changes that you'll see in this table is that we've taken and we've shifted out a large chunk of construction contingency into the water reclamation facility component of the project. We had minimal changes in the conveyance facilities. That project is currently being advertised for bidding, as it's been, the design's been completed for several months. We actually opened bids on the conveyance facilities component of the project tomorrow at 2 o'clock, so we're excited about, about that big milestone. In terms of the recycled water facilities, again, minimal to no changes there in terms of the project budget and how it's being, how it's being projected out. We had some changes in some of the general project costs in terms of conveyance facilities, a little bit of change in the, in the project schedule, so some, a little bit of additional construction management time, additional permitting support for a number of the different environmental issues that we, environmental issues we've been dealing with, as well as the affordable reuse permitting. And then we had an increase in some of the property acquisition costs specifically as it relates to the Shepherd property that we've discussed previously. In Q3 of FY 1920, one of the things that was added to the presentation that we provided wasn't added as a change to the report, but what we wanted to do was we wanted to track the debt service costs. So in Q3 1920 is when we had an increase in the project budget, but because of the way that the, some of the funding is actualized, we wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive in terms of what's the impact of, number one, the project budget increase, but also what's the impact of some of the low-interest funding that we are currently planning, planning on receiving. We've looked at that in a, in a couple of different ways, in terms of total debt service cost, excuse me, total debt service cost, present value of total debt service payments, and maximum annual debt service payment that would occur over the life of the project. And you can see, even with the project budget increase, because of the funding that we've received, the favorable rate on the WIFIA loan and us being placed on the fundable list for SRF, we are tracking a pretty significant reduction in, in all of those different ways you can look at the debt service costs. Key accomplishments and challenges. Again, in terms of the general project, obviously we've continued to support some of the permitting efforts across the different elements of the project, but one of the things we have continued is, is our engagement with, with SRF staff. While we've been placed on the fundable list, we don't yet have that agreement signed, and we're pushing as hard as we can to facilitate their review and to get that funding agreement signed. Again, we're tracking, signing that funding agreement by the end of the year. We've continued to advance construction on the South Bay Boulevard site, but we have acknowledged that we do have the soil slip issue to deal with. It's, it's our next big challenge that we'll, we'll be looking to get over and working with the design build team on, on how to resolve that issue. In terms of conveyance facilities, we, this was, this initial report was done just soon after we had our pre-bid meeting for, for the conveyance facilities component of the project, had a good showing of general contractors at that meeting. One of the things that has been a challenge, and we are making progress, is the receipt of easements necessary to construct the pipeline in the city's existing bike path. And we're dealing with both PG&E and Vistra there, and we've got some things going on currently with, with Vistra, and I can get into that if folks have questions. On the recycled water facilities, we received the final TM from GSI confirming selection of the West Injection Area. So we are going to be presenting at PWAAB next week on the specifics of that TM that was developed by, by GSI and that was recently finalized. And again, that TM solidifies the West Injection Area being the superior site and the West Injection Area being one west of Highway 1.
TM, Eric, maybe just explain, please?
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, man. Yes, TM stands for Technical Memorandum. So it's a, a report, fancy, fancy word for a report. Again, the same issues with the property with Vistra or impact the recycled water facilities as well as conveyance facilities, and those are tied up in the same process that we're going through currently with Vistra. The project dashboard, it shouldn't come as a surprise, but most of the items here are green. It's because we've rebase lined the schedule and we have rebase lined the budget, and so we're showing performance. Essentially, the baseline and the current are the same at this point in time. Now, the report, throughout the report, we do discuss the, the original budget and the original schedule, so that information is in there as well. This was the way that, when we presented the, the reporting that we had presented showing that we would do this annual rebase lining and look at performance against the annual baseline. Again, the same thing here, we've got the rebase lining here. In previous reports, you may remember a red line that shows the deviation between the blue line, which is the, which is the the blue line, which is the, which is the annual baseline. And so you will see the red line show up as we move through this, this fiscal year here if we have any deviations, deviations from the annual baseline. This is a summary of the current versus planned expenditures. And you can see the S curve there showing the total spend of the, just over 130 million for the total project. Again, the red triangle there, or excuse me, red diamond there shows the T S O compliance date. So while we will continue to be working on the installation, construction of the injection wells, that red diamond shows the, the T S O compliance date that I mentioned previously. Expenditures to date. So expenditures to date in terms of active contracts or, excuse me, total contracts is, is about 26 million. In reality, it's about 23.7 million is the total expenditures to date for the project. Again, again, against the total project estimate, I can say 130.6 million. This shows the updated schedule showing the S P I. As you would imagine, the S P I is over one, meaning that the project is showing on schedule as it relates to the re baseline schedule and the program percent complete currently showing at 76%. Again, this goes back to the beginning of the project in 2013 when the, the project is, we currently know it was started. This milestone schedule here shows some of the details as it relates to some of the critical milestones. Again, one of the most important milestones that we're tracking is compliance with the time schedule order from the regional board. Again, that's September 2nd of 2022, as well as you can see other milestones that have actualized. A, a couple of the other key milestones that are coming up. As I mentioned, we are opening bids tomorrow for the conveyance facilities component of the project. Once we open those bids and evaluate those bids, we'll be making a recommendation to council, which will go to council on September 22nd. So in about a month and, a month and a half, we'll have a, an award recommendation for the pipeline component of the project. Schedule adjustments, a couple of things that to note that have changed on the schedule since the last, the last baseline schedule. Again, we have some delays for the recycled water facilities. A lot of this has been due to some of the ways that we had back in 2019 and early 2020 in accessing the Vistra property and doing the work that we need to do in terms of the injection testing to continue that project, component of the project forward. And then some of the delays that I showed previously for the, the work project itself. Again, most of that is, is related to the earthwork delays regarding the need for the stream bed alteration agreement, C D F W. Again, the recommendation is that you receive the work quarterly update report. And then I can answer any questions that you've got either on the project progress or the report itself.
Thank you, Eric. Very much appreciated. And thank you for the comprehensive overview. We're going to go ahead and open it up for council questions. I'll start us off this time. Let me begin by referring you to page 58 of the staff report, which would be the table regarding loan reimbursement requests and receipts. And I assume Ms. Callaway is online, and if she'd like to chime in, certainly feel free, Jen, to do that. I wanted to go to table two, summary of S R F planning loan reimbursement requests and receipts. Fortunately, I see in the middle column, line number two, that we had been approved for $5.5 million of the 6.4 million that was requested on 11/4 of 2019. That's encouraging. But when I look at, at the time from the request to reimbursement, my question is, what are the issues or the details involved in what appears to be, as compared to W F I, which I'll get to in just a second, a significantly extended time to receive dollars from especially an S R F planning loan that has been around and approved a number of years ago?
Yeah, so I can, I can answer, I can start answering that question, and then I can let Ms. Callaway follow up on that as, as her and her staff have been involved in preparing those reimbursement requests. I think there's a couple of things to note on the planning loan. One, it's, it's really a one off in, in, in its nature. S R F does not have any other planning loans like, like this one, which, which I think poses some issues. The other, the other thing that we've got is there are some changes in policy around some of the reimbursable costs and some relatively minor reimbursable costs that S R F is no longer reimbursing, things like travel. So we've got large dollar amounts that were held up by some, some things like some, some travel from out of state by the D B team, for example, that would typically be eligible costs but are not eligible for reimbursement. And then we also have another thing with the recycled water planning grant we've got, our $75,000 recycled water planning grant. There was some overlap between one of the reimbursement requests and that. And so that's caused some delays as well. And then S R F has just been very slow in, in, in being able to process these. I, and, and Ms. Callaway, I don't know if you have any additional items you want to note there?
I would just add a couple of things. First, actually, just today, we received notification that we'll be receiving the 5.53 million dollars. So expect that to be in by the end of the week or early next week. They did send the official notification today. And also, I mean, one of the challenges with, with these, these were reimbursements of expenses that occurred from 2015, end of 2015 up through March of 2019, I believe. So, or 2020. But a lot of those were reimbursements that were, you know, prior to current staffing on board. We had to go through our storage and our, our retention files to obtain the documents we had. And then we had to follow up after submitting to S R F to get some additional information. So I think there was just some delays given the transition and staffing and information we had to gather for those. And I'm not sure with the final reimbursement, I think they're still going through some of that and will likely ask for some additional supporting documentation. My, my hope is, once we get to the assigned agreement for the construction phase with S R F, we have a process in place for W F I that's working very well. We'll use that same process for S R F, and hopefully that will be a much quicker reimbursement process.
Great, Jen, thank you for that. And Eric, thank you, appreciate that. And, and remind me, is the interest rate on the S R F planning load 1.7%?
That, yes, that's my recollection.
Okay, so, so it, it, it would behoove us to receive that money as quickly as possible in order to preserve cash because the late rate of return is 2.03%, which means we can leverage the, the difference in interest rate with cash on hand. And so hopefully, the state will get its act together and, and perhaps maybe our systems will more timely allow us to receive the money. My next question is on table three. It, it appears that W F I is very quick to reimburse. What's been your experience, any delays there? Is that, is this experience going to be indicative of, of future submissions, do you think? I'm just curious about how that's working.
Yeah, so the W F I process is working very smoothly. We communicate regularly with our, our loan processing agent there. We did receive the reimbursement request number four since publication of this report. So we received that money. And so far, all the indications are the process we've set up is, is working well. They're happy with it, we're happy with it. So we expect to continue down that route. We are intending to, we submit every two weeks, or at least once a month, every two weeks for W F I with the reimbursements being made by the 15th of the month. That, that's their standard for reimbursement, and that works well for us. We intend to do that to receive the cash flow coming in and also preserve the cash we have on hand since we are earning more in our late account than we're being charged for on the W F I loan since it's less than 1%. I would caution that late is, you know, rapidly going down. It is below 2% now, but it's still earning more than the W F I loan is, is charging us.
Great, thanks for that. And remind me, the, the W F I interest rate is at 0.83%?
That's correct.
Right, okay. So obviously, if you can leverage that cash in the short term, it makes a lot of sense to do that as long as late is hanging around too, or slightly there below. Good, and we, we do, oh, go ahead, thank you.
That, that relates to Ms. Winholz's comments earlier in the evening about the balance of cash in our water and sewer funds. That has been intentional and that we're not using the cash on hand other than from a cash flow perspective at this point, since we're earning more money than we're paying.
Well, that was going to be my next question, but you answered it or anticipated it. Thank you for that. And yeah, 2% of 16 million is 320 K a year, or 320,000 a year. And it's good to have income coming into the water and sewer fund at that rate where we can get reimbursed. And remind me again, the terms of the W F I loan are amortized over 35 years, with the first five years being no payment required, is that correct?
That's correct.
No repayment requirements, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have additional time there to leverage cash as well, I would assume. That was a question, that was a, I'm assuming. Okay, I'll move on. Page number 67 on the staff report. The, in the middle of 1.1, 1.1, 1.2 construction, it, it talks about the inability for the contractor to access the erogional feature, et cetera, and talks about the delays and inefficiencies will result in the need for a potential change order that you did talk about. And my question is, the next sentence talks about the finalization of the stream bed alteration agreement, or the S A A. Remind me about how long that delay was from California Department of Fish and Wildlife to get that stream bed alteration agreement?
Yeah, thank, thank you, thank you for that, for that question. Yeah, so the, we started coordination with them back in the middle of last year. I want to say the end of June or beginning of July of, of last year, we coordinated with the three principal agencies that could take jurisdiction of, of that feature, of which we did not believe it to be a feature that, that they would take jurisdiction over. That was Army Corps of Engineers, the regional board, and C D F W. And we tried for a number of months to get their consensus. And then finally, left with, with no other options, really, we were forced to submit the notification. And, and even then, when we submitted that initial notification, did we not think that they were going to take jurisdiction? And that process took a number of months since we, after we submitted the initial notification. I did note one issue with the dates in the, in the report that Ms. Winholz brought up in, in the correspondence, that date about the, the late March for the issuance of the initial notification. That initial notification was issued in late February. February 27th, I believe, is the date that was on, on, on the cover letter that went with that notification form. And so the, it took all of the time and then some for them to get through the notification. And then they actually were able to speed up the development of the stream bed alteration agreement. A lot of encouragement from a, a number of different folks on the project team and, and some of other stakeholders and elected officials, and we're thankful for that.
Great, thank you. Page 74. I, I've gotten a number of comments from community members regarding the basic stoplight, green, yellow, red. Questions like if the original budget was 126 million and it's now 130, how could it be green? And so my question is, what timeline does this, what time period does this compare? If a budget is readjusted and that becomes the new baseline, is that what you use then to, to look at baseline versus current? Or could you just, Eric, explain how this chart works so that it's a little clearer for folks?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So as I mentioned, when we previously put together this table and we discussed the reporting with city staff and brought our recommendations to, to council in regards to reporting, this dashboard here shows the current year baseline budget and schedule versus current performance. So in the left-hand column, as you'll see in that table, under baseline, that's essentially the baseline that we've just adopted or that we're adopting here with the, with the quarterly report of 130.7 million, 130.66 million. So the current, which is essentially the same time period right now, is the same. So I, I, I do understand people looking at that, and we got a number of questions at C F A C saying, well, you know, it's, you're, you're looking and you're, and you're scoring yourself or grading yourself based on the, the re baseline budget that was just developed. Now, over the, over the duration of the year, as we get into Q one, Q two, Q three, and Q four of, of this upcoming fiscal year, that's where the baseline and current will, will no longer match. Hopefully, we're going in the opposite direction, our current's going lower. But, but that is the way that that table is put together. And can entertain changing the way that that table is presented, but that's how the table was, was initially conceived and, and put together.
Thank you. I'm not requesting a change, and that would be under discussion, but I am looking and seeking for clarification because I think if you're not looking at this consistently, like perhaps myself or other council members that review this almost routinely, it can be confusing to the public, wondering, how can you be over budget so much on your W R F costs and still get a G, green light? And I wanted to make sure that it was, once again, articulated and clear for folks as we move forward. Page number 75 of the staff report. About the sixth line down invoices, 630, 20 through 630, 20. So my, my sense is, when I'm reading here, is that to date, we have spent 23.7 million dollars on the W R F project. We're about 18.1% of the overall project, all components. Okay? And the next question is, how much of that 23.7 million dollars involved previous work by M K N and Associates and/or the prior project manager, and is that included in that figure?
Yes, so I, I don't have it off the top of my head what the total cost was. I believe that the, the cost that was coded as program management prior to April of 2018, excuse me, was right around $1 million. So 1 million of that. But that includes essentially the 23.7 million goes all the way back to, I know we used 20, and I can't remember what quarter it is in 2013 off the top of my head, when essentially this project in this iteration was, was started and accounting, accounting started for the, the project costs. So this goes back to and includes every dollar on the program that has been, or the project that's been spent since 2013 when, when accounting started keeping track of, of the costs.
Great, and then, I'm trying to find the reference, but if we've spent 23.7 to date through 630, I think I saw on here, we'll be somewhere above 40 million dollars by the end of this fiscal year, is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have the reference, but that's my recollection, just trying to.
Yeah, it, it's right around, I get, I Yeah, um, it, it's right around. I get, I got the actual number here. Uh, but I believe it's right around forty one million. Um, I broke down. We track it on, we've got a, a pretty good breakdown based on fiscal year, but yeah, looking at the, where we'll be at the end of December, it's, it's based on current estimates. It's about forty five million dollars.
Okay, thanks. And uh, page ninety three of the staff report. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about GSI's analysis. Remind me, um, did we not, as a council, um, rule out um, the non-Western or I guess the easterly injection site as being fatally flawed and extremely more costly than the Western injections, injection site?
Um, so that's a, that's a good question. I, I, I think um, you're confusing, you may be confusing the conveyance pipeline routing uh, and the injection well location. So, yeah, it gets a little bit confusing because we do have, um, we refer to the injection locations as West and East. And then if you go back to kind of the end of twenty eighteen, when we were looking at um, the pipeline routing and, and uh, in, in February of twenty nineteen, when council um, selected the pipeline routing, that was also East versus West. So there was a technical infeasibility and cost difference on the conveyance pipelines. Um, on the injection wells, there is a cost increase. We, we've acknowledged in the past, the East injection was going to be more costly. Uh, it's, it's physically more pipe. Uh, it's located in uh, in privately owned property. Um, and this report uh, answers the technical questions about which site is really um, much better for the injection.
So um, can we, we say without a doubt that um, that given GSI's analysis that indirect potable reo- reuse is feasible um, on this or will be potentially feasible on this site?
Yes. So um, you, you go back to the, the report that was done in twenty seventeen was um, was really, in, in its title was the feasibility study and said, um, yes, you can do potable reuse on either one of these sites. Uh, and now uh, this report says that you can do potable reuse on, really on, you could do potable reuse on both of these sites. Um, but the West injection area is, is, is much more, uh, is much more preferable uh, over the Eastern area.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering those questions. Uh, I will move to other council members. Council member Heller, sir, do you have questions?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First questions are for the staff report, uh, Ms. Calloway, and some of this has been covered already, but I, I just want to make sure that I understand the financing situation here. The uh, let me put on my beautiful face here. Uh, there we go. I'm here.
Seeing it all now.
Yeah. So we have a hundred and thirty million dollar project and we have uh, seventy two million dollars financing in place. And I'm assuming that we're, we're financing the entire project, so we need another fifty eight million in financing. Is that, is that correct?
Um, the rate study was not built on financing the whole project. Um, the original rate study that was done with the Prop two eighteen included cash on hand. Um, these are going to be rough estimates because I don't quite remember. I want to say twenty six million dollars of cash on hand. Bond financing and WIFIA financing, because at the time we had not given, been given um, notification that we would receive the SRF financing. We hadn't been placed on the funding list. Then given the interest rates that we received in WIFIA, um, where the interest rates are now with SRF and, and hoping to have that agreement signed soon. Um, knowing we're on the funding list with the five million dollars in grants, grants, we will likely recommend that we um, have financing up to the full cost of the project. That doesn't mean we have to draw it all down. It would just give us flexibility if the council wanted to use um, the cash and water sewer funds to advance other capital projects. Um, or have other options, um, you know, for, for projects in those funds. Um, especially given that we're earning more interest at this point than we are paying on the financing. So we can alter the plan um, this year with that and we aren't using our cash to pay for expenses other than from a cash flow perspective.
Okay, but you are pursuing financing for the whole project? A hundred and thirty?
Yeah.
I misunderstood you.
That, that's correct. I think if SRF will allow us to finance the remaining portion fully, they might place restrictions on that. Um, but we won't know that until we get further in that process.
So basically we're looking for another fifty eight million in financing, if my math is correct?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Okay. Um, then the SRF is, uh, Mayor Heding has, has talked about a little bit. Um, we need a lot of money from those guys. I mean, WIFIA is going like clockwork. It's great. Uh, I'm very concerned about uh, the SRF funding. And as you note in your staff report, unknowns uh, are uh, the funding amount, the rate, the term, the amount to be approved. Um, we're opening bids tomorrow on the pipeline project. Don't we need this funding uh, for this pipeline, uh, part of the project?
I'll, I'll, I mean, I'll defer to Eric on to the cost, but with the amount of cash we have right now in our WIFIA commitments, I think we would be uh, but we're, we're good for the time being, but we do need SRF to complete the remaining part of the project or alternative funding.
Yeah, I think um, just to, just to clarify that a little bit, um, if we go back to the original rate study uh, in twenty eighteen, it assumed WIFIA at the, the, at the amount that we've received, I'll call it roughly sixty two million. Uh, the twenty, roughly twenty five million, twenty six million of cash on hand. And the remaining portion of the project was assumed to be funded by a conventional bond funding at greater than four percent. Uh, and so um, if we did not receive the uh, the SRF, additional uh, SRF construction loan amount, uh, we would still have enough funds to complete the project. Um, as I mentioned, the original rate study um, did not assume that we were going to get the construct, the SRF construction loan. Now, it did include the ten point three million dollar SRF planning loan. Um, so um, you know, obviously we're, we're, we're very happy to get that money at, at, at somewhere um, around two percent is what we're currently planning um, versus a conventional bonds. Um, but the original rate study uh, did not include um, uh, SRF construction dollars.
So if we have to resort to using conventional bonds to complete the project, the rate study is, is still solid?
Correct.
Okay. And then in terms of the, I mean, I don't know what condition the state is in, but is there any way to know really uh, when we're going to get the balance of the planning loan or? Is going?
Jeff, you cut out that last part.
Uh, is there any way to know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, obviously I'm concerned about SRF. Do we know at all what funding amounts we might get from them and when we might get them? Or is it just, I mean, what's that relationship like? Uh, where, where are we at with that?
Yeah, the, the relationship is really, is, is really good. And um, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to blame this and on, on COVID, but it is taking them a bit longer and they've, they have admitted that, that their review process is taking a bit longer uh, because of COVID. But I will say, obviously we completed the environmental review, um, which is typically the most difficult and time-consuming piece of it. We had to complete the environmental review um, prior to them allowing us to start construction. So we completed that back around the end of March. Um, and we completed their uh, legal review. And um, and we are also very, very close on uh, the financial review being completed as well. Um, we have by, um, up until a couple of weeks ago, we started, we decided to go to biweekly meetings. We do have weekly check-ins. Uh, Rob and I talk with our project manager, Ashley, uh, on a weekly basis. Um, so that we can make sure that we are feeding her the information that they need uh, to facilitate their review. Um, what they've committed to, um, or what we, what we're holding them to is that we will have a signed loan agreement by the end of this calendar year. Um, and, and that's about as, as quickly as they think that they can, they can push this forward. It typically does take um, uh, quite a while to get these things done. And like I said, um, definitely the COVID situation is not helping. They are still not, not functioning out of their offices. They are still working from home. Uh, and um, I don't think that they would be um, too upset if I were to say that their uh, systems are not super geared towards uh, being able to work remotely. Um, so they're, they are, uh, they're continuing their review. It hasn't stopped, but it, it definitely has, it slowed a bit.
So is it the city's plan to award the contract for the pipeline conveyance, whether or not the financing is in place to complete it?
Uh, our recommendation would be to award the project, um, again, because the original twenty eighteen rate study uh, did not require um, SRF. And, and prudently so. I, I think that was part of the discussion that went on back when the rate study was being done. And that was even before the SRF process had really kind of changed back in twenty nineteen and become um, much more competitive. Um, the decision was made that, you know, SRF money was not going to be a, a slam dunk necessarily. Uh, it was over prescribed, uh, and uh, and it was competitive to get. Um, and uh, and, and we, I, do I think that we are going to get the money? I absolutely think we are going to get the money. Uh, I think it's just taking a little bit wa- a little while longer for them to complete their review and for us to negotiate the agreement.
So, uh, Ms. Calloway, you ju- you agree with that uh, statement?
Well, of course, the um, you know, conservative finance side of me would say that we should have agreements in place and sign. However, our rates are approved on bond financing, so we have an alternative method. And we have sufficient um, cash flow going at this point to, to meet our obligations and receive reimbursements through WIFIA. Um, so should there be a problem, we can go out and issue bonds. Um, you know, at the beginning of the year, if, if something happens with SRF.
Okay. Uh, uh, so Eric, moving on to your report, the PowerPoint that you just showed, has that been issued to the council or the public?
Um, I believe it is, it was not included in the uh, in the packet that went out uh, with the agenda. So it was in addition to, um, the uh, it is very similar to the presentation given at CFAC, uh, which is available on the um, WRF project website.
The PowerPoint that you did uh, has a new baseline, uh, budget and a new baseline schedule. Is that right?
Correct.
It's not included in the staff report, was it?
No, the presentation was not included in the staff report, um, but it includes information from the report that was included in the staff report.
Okay, because in the staff report, it talks about re-baselining the budget uh, at the end of Q one. It looks like you re-basel- you re-baselined it already.
Yeah, so the, the budget is re-baselined at the end of the fiscal year. So as of June thirtieth or July first, we reconcile the budget then on a quarterly basis. So right now, the budget is a hundred and thirty point seven million. When our report comes out for July, uh, showing what activities happened in July, our budget will continue to show a hundred and thirty point seven million. We're not going to re- uh, look at the budget and re-project out the budget until we get to the end of Q one of this fiscal year. So for another two months. At that point in time, we will all, we will keep the hundred and thirty point seven as our baseline. And we will look and see what our Q one budget is. And, and maybe that goes down to a, a hundred and thirty point one million. So you'll see a hundred and thirty point seven million. And then at, and if Q one, you'll have another number, which would be a hundred and thirty point one or, or some other number that would be comparable to the hundred and thirty point seven.
So the information in the PowerPoint is exactly as the information in the staff report?
Correct.
Okay. I'm kind of old fashioned. I'm used to having financing in place before I award contracts. Um, but beyond the financing, do you have all the permits in place to start the conveyance project?
Uh, we are still waiting on the Caltrans encroachment permit. Uh, that's one of the permits that we're waiting on. And we're also waiting on the stream bed alteration agreement for uh, the uh, pipeline portion of the project. Both of those are, are in process currently. Uh, and we have plans to start construction uh, without those permits. We don't need those permits in order to start construction. Those are, those permits cover relatively small portion of the overall project. And it's not the way that we think the contractor is going to start the project. Um, we should have the Caltrans encroachment permit any day. Uh, we were anticipating having that back in uh, early July of, of this year. And, and again, I, I don't want to, um, I, I, I don't want to disparage the, any of the agencies that we're working with. Um, but they are, have been impacted, impacted by um, by the COVID situation and they have indicated to us that things are taking longer because of, of that, that situation.
Okay. And, and I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do we have the easements you need to install the piping, uh, where it's going to run to and from?
Uh, the easements with PG&E, um, as we've talked a little bit about before, they are not challenging our prejudgment possession. Um, so we have the, the right to construct the pipeline uh, in, in the PG&E easements. Uh, now, now Vistra obviously is, is another story and, and I can go into a little bit of that here. Um, we had a prejudgment possession hearing uh, on, uh, on July thirtieth. Uh, so roughly nine, ten days ago, um, that hearing was held. And uh, and, and, and I can let, I see Chris jumping on here. I can let Chris kind of fill in some of the details, but we're uh, we're, we're kind of in limbo uh, at this minute in terms of the prejudgment possession. So, uh, Mr. Newmeyer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Saris. In regards to the easements over the Vistra property, uh, we had a court hearing on July thirtieth. And the court issued a tentative ruling in the city's favor. And the court right now has not issued its final ruling. So, once we get the final ruling, um, of course we'll know how we can proceed. If the court does adopt its tentative and issues the ruling in our favor, um, then shortly thereafter, we'll have possession, prejudgment possession of the property that we need for the easements. So we're waiting on the court.
Okay. Um, and then Eric, my other question is this. On the WRF project, the plant itself, would the, there's certain owner, what's not, what are known as, as owner caused delays that have resulted in change orders, uh, and increased uh, in the range of six million dollars. Not all of it was, was owner caused delays, but delays by the owner and not having permits in place. Other, what are you doing to protect the owners, the ratepayers, the average man on the street? To keep that from happening with the pipeline project? What language do you have in the bid documents or the contract documents which protect us against owner caused delays of any kind?
Um, so we do have some flexibility and we have some work restrictions uh, in, in those documents to be able to uh, to move construction forward. As I, as I mentioned, it, it's a little bit of a different situation than we've got with uh, the water reclamation facility itself. Um, I would say that the biggest source of, of delays uh, obviously have been uh, US Fish and Wildlife and, and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Now, um, in regards to um, US Fish and Wildlife and the biological opinion, the biological opinion that we negotiated with um, with US Fish and Wildlife covers the whole project. So we don't have any, uh, we won't have any surprises looking or, or waiting for us uh, in regards to US Fish and Wildlife and any of those endangered species, of which there are three that we're really dealing with, with the conveyance pipelines. Um, the, the red-legged frog to, to a, a much lesser extent. We've got the tidewater goby and the shoulder-banded snail. And again, our, our biological opinion uh, addressed those other species. So we don't have uh, the issue to deal with uh, US Fish and Wildlife, which was um, primarily the, the major delay that we had, uh, that we had there. In terms of California Department of Fish and Wildlife, that stream bed alteration agreement impacts a, a very, very small portion of the project. Uh, and, and we can work with the contractor uh, to schedule that work if we need to um, to move that work out uh, to accommodate any, any issue with the permit. We have the flexibility there. Unfortunately, with the way that the WRF construction goes, um, the, the earthwork is al- is always going to be planned to be done first. There was very little that we could do um, to kind of re- resequence the earthwork. We did everything that we could to try to minimize um, the cost impacts and the DB team worked with us to do so and to continue to move the project forward without the stream bed alteration agreement. Um, but when you're working on one um, kind of all-connected site, um, that made that difficult. So that's, that's, that's what we're anticipating for. Uh, that's why we anticipate the conveyance facilities being quite a bit different uh, than what we're dealing with the WRF.
So let me know, owner caused delays in the piping project?
Uh, that's, that's what, that, that's what our goal is always.
Okay. And then uh, of course, one of the things that happens a lot with piping, as you know, is breaking lines that you don't know are there and so forth. What kind of language do you have relative to unforeseen conditions in the piping contract to ensure that those kinds of events and costs don't come back to the owner?
So one of the things, um, and, and, and you bring up a good point, which is something that we deal with uh, on, on every linear project. Uh, as you'll remember, we came back to uh, council. Uh, it was, it was probably the better part of a year ago, uh, as part of the amendment that we negotiated with Waterworks. Uh, we did a lot more uh, potholing and utility investigation. with Waterworks, we did a lot more potholing and utility investigation than was previously negotiated with Waterworks by the previous program manager. So we came in and we added a good chunk of money into their contract and did, and don't hold me to this without having seen it, I think it was over 60 additional potholes to locate existing utilities out there to make sure that we don't have the issue to deal with. It's better to avoid the issue than dealing with it once we get into construction. So we did a bunch of additional utility investigation. We also are requiring the contractor to do additional utility investigation work before they start installation of pipelines. So those are two of the ways that we are trying to mitigate those unforeseen conditions with additional potholing that we've already done, and we've built into the final design of the project, and then requiring the contractor to do additional utility investigation. By no means have we identified every last issue. This is a complex pipeline project. We're running a number of pipes through some pretty congested corridors. We've done our best to identify all of the issues, but I'm sure we're going to have things that come up during construction that we're going to have to work through with the contractor.
Okay, so if the contractor does hit a pipeline that is unmarked, or has not been discovered, or is not in the drawing, in the documents, who pays for that? The city or the contractor?
The city would pay for that. And I will say, and maybe I shouldn't have answered so quickly, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, but really, if it's something that was not in, that was not in the drawings, based on the city's ASB drawings, as confirmed by the utility investigation work, that's been done, and the contractor has an issue, and they have a legitimate claim, then it would be a cost to the city. We can't find every single pipeline. We can't find any, every single conflict. It just doesn't make sense from a cost standpoint to do unlimited potholing. So we think we've struck a good balance between spending a good amount of money upfront to find as many as we can and not wasting or overspending the city's money on that.
Well, I would take issue with that position. Frankly, I've managed many projects where you do all the potholing, you tell the contractor where all the lines are that you know of, and the responsibility for broken lines, whether they're marked or not marked, is on the contractor. And I think you need to change your contract language. Bids are opening tomorrow. It's kind of late, frankly, but I disagree with your position completely on this.
Perhaps in discussion.
It's a red flag. I believe it's a red flag for change orders. Okay, my next question. We've got, back to the WRF for a minute. I believe we have two outstanding PCOs that we don't know the numbers on. One is the cost of the delays and inefficiencies relating to the erosional feature, right? And then the other one is the soil slip?
Correct.
So do we know what those numbers are? You said you got a draft PCO, and what kind of numbers are we looking at there in the context of a contingency remaining of less than $1.5 million for the entire WRF plant project?
So we're still waiting on the assessment from the delays from the contractor. They're still working on that. I will tell you that either Friday or Monday, so last Friday or this Monday, we received a draft PCO for the soil slip. And I don't have the exact number, but it was just north of about 300,000. And so, again, that hasn't been reviewed in detail by both our construction manager, as well as our construction estimator that we have review every PCO that comes across. So I'll just give you an idea of the order of magnitude of that one. And I do want to say that for that soil slip issue, again, it's the city's position and our position that the city should not be responsible for the cause, for the costs associated with that soil slip. The contractor has gone through in following the contract language and the provisions in the contract to reserve their right to claim for that issue. And again, the city's position that the city should not be responsible for the costs associated with the soil slip.
Is work on that soil slip and repairing it proceeding?
Yes, the soil slip material, no matter the outcome, whether it, or no matter the merit or where the responsibility lies on that, the fix was pretty straightforward. Once we identified in the soil slip, I will say, once the issue came to a head, we had to deal with it. And so regardless, that 15,000 cubic yards of material needed to be removed once the soil slipped to occur.
Okay, that's good. That's underway. Back to the alteration agreement, do we have a rough order of magnitude cost on what that's going to be?
We don't know exactly what that's going to be. It's going to be in the six figures. I think that's something that we are anticipating. But again, we don't know exactly what the impacts are to the contractor. And again, the contractor is working on getting us those numbers.
So when do you think we'll get these two PCOs to council?
I think that potentially, even though we don't have the numbers yet for the delays, I think that the, in relation to that PCO, there's only one question there. I think the merit is there for the contractor. I think that the amount is what's going to be, is what's going to be negotiated. And I think the soil slip is a stickier issue, frankly, because we have to answer two questions. We're going to do our due diligence on the PCO, regardless of merit, and vet the costs, and make sure that the number that they've given us is the right, is a right and fair number, regardless of who pays for it. But in that case, we're going to be negotiating and discussing the merit and if the design-build team warrants a change in the GMP for the soil slip. And again, we don't believe that that's the case.
Okay, so would you say the PCOs are coming to the council in September, October?
I would say that they could come as early as October.
But no sooner than that?
I don't think so. Again, because if we just, if I just think back a little bit about the previous delay claims, there's a process that we go through in terms of reviewing and vetting those, and then the negotiation process itself that we go through before it comes to council, and it's going to take, it's going to take some time.
Okay, so we've got, as I understand, we've got two PCOs out there, both in six figures, that we don't know the exact amounts for, or rough magnitude.
We know the maximum amount for the soil slip is, and the exact number is, I think it's 340-some thousand. I don't have it right sitting in front of me.
Okay. The contingency remaining for the WRF plant is less than $1.5 million. Considering that you're ingrading and just started construction of the buildings, are you concerned at all that that contingency is less than 2% of the budget with two PCOs remaining out there and a whole lot of work ahead of you on the WRF project?
No, I'm not worried. I'm not worried about that issue. I will say, we spend a lot of time going through the design process and working with the designer and identifying the issues that we had that could come up throughout this process. We've identified a lot of those already, and they have resulted in some of the change orders that we previously talked about. We don't have any outstanding permits that we're waiting on, and so we're not concerned about construction, any construction delays that could be caused by environmental or permits or other things. And considering we're almost through earthwork, not worried about unforeseen conditions, any additional unforeseen conditions in the earthwork. We also have around $450,000 of additional allowance that's built into the GMP for environmental costs. We talked about that a little bit in the past. That's also potentially another source of funds that we can use to offset some of the delay costs that were caused by an environmental issue. So we've got some things that we are looking into. We're also potentially looking into some cost-saving measures as it relates to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We're trying to value engineer some of the frog mitigation items that have been added to the contract in order to realize some savings there. We've just started some of the discussions first with the EPA and hoping to continue those on with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So again, we've got the environmental allowance. We've already unearthed a lot of the, a lot of the issues with the design and flushed out some of the issues that we had with the original design. I don't anticipate a lot of change orders coming up as it relates to equipment selections or anything else. And we don't have any outstanding environmental issues on the site.
Okay, so when those two PCOs come to the council, the council has the authority to reject them, isn't that right?
Correct.
And what happens if the council votes no on a proposed change order?
I would have to look at the design build, the design build agreement, but there are provisions in there for non-payment and contract termination and everything else. But without having my contracts person here, I would assume that some of those provisions would kick in if some of these change orders were not approved.
Okay. Moving on to the recycled water project, the staff report says that the final technical memorandum was expected June 19th, but it hasn't been received. So has that been received or not?
Yeah, we've received the final, we've received the final GSI report. It's been posted to the WRF website, and for a number of different reasons, one being that we didn't have a PWA meeting scheduled in July. We wanted to bring that to PWA first before we brought it to council. So we've had that report since, I want to say, the second or third week of June. Weren't able to bring it to PWA in July, and now we're bringing it to PWA next week. But that report is available on the WRF website.
Maybe I misread the staff report, but it said you didn't have it. So that was five days ago. Okay, let's see, the longer groundwater retention times, you referenced that in your report. What's that all about?
So we've been working with Division of Drinking Water, who's the vein regulator, is the regulator for recycled water projects. And obviously, there are some hard and fast rules and hard and fast regulations as it pertains to the type of project that we're doing. One of those is the groundwater retention time. Our groundwater retention times meet the minimum requirements. They're a sufficient amount above the minimum requirements. But the city is definitely one of the smaller communities that is pursuing this type of project. And through our discussions with DDW, the longer and longer that we can get groundwater retention times, the more comfortable they will be. We recently submitted our initial permitting document to them, our Title 22 engineering report, and that is currently under review. But what we have done is, we're having GSI run some additional scenarios, looking at potentially injecting, starting the injection with a smaller quantity of water or extracting a smaller quantity of water initially to help ease the permitting. And really, that's just come out of a number of conversations that we've had with DDW on this project and other projects, trying to maximize that groundwater travel time, the longer that we can get. And if we can get an initial permit that allows us to start with a smaller quantity of injection that shows longer retention times, that may make DDW a little bit more comfortable and can get our foot in the door a little bit easier. And then the city could work up to higher and higher injection rates until you get to the total 825 acre feet per year, which both the feasibility study and the new Phase Two report that's discussed, as you mentioned, the June 2020 report, they do show that the city can inject up to 825 acre feet in that western injection area without issue.
Okay, and just to refresh my memory, has the physical testing started on that to confirm that capacity? I know there's been a lot of modeling done.
The physical testing has not started. The reason for that is, our original plan was to use an injection well on Vistra property, the Morro Bay Niche Water Company well. We had permission from Vistra to evaluate that well for use as an injection well. And unfortunately, based on our evaluation, that well wasn't suitable. So we are working through the land acquisition stuff with Vistra, and we will be working on the injection well, moving forward with the pilot injection well very soon here. One of the things that the GSI and us have talked about is actually building and constructing a full-scale injection well and then using it for piloting. And so we're not throwing away a pilot injection well now. We have to put in a pilot injection well. So we've got some things that we're working through with them. But the first hump is getting over the, the first hump to get over is the property itself.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much for your patience and your explanations. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember McPherson, please.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. I have a few follow-up questions, some of them to ones that both the mayor and Councilmember Heller have asked. Going back to this issue of the soil slip, I know that you are fairly confident that it isn't the city's fault, and that in fact, it is the contractor who is going to have to bear the cost of that. Can you explain why you think that? On what basis you're saying that?
Without getting into, without maybe showing all of our, showing our hand completely, the contractor is claiming, and maybe I'll ask Chris to, Mr. Newmeyer, to comment on this. This is something that likely is going to be going into somewhat of a contentious discussion. Might want to hold off in answering that question in particular.
Yeah, I would suggest as legal counsel that we don't get too far into the details of what is right now a negotiation over responsibility.
Okay, that's fine. I just know that you're confident. And the stream bed alteration agreement, you said you would give a little bit more of an explanation. I'm kind of curious to know exactly what that means, what that is, and what the implications are for the project.
Yeah, so the stream bed alteration agreement, and I don't know if we received the stream bed alteration agreement in mid-July. And when I read the draft stream bed alteration agreement, I was happy on one hand, because it essentially did not impose any additional mitigations or any additional constraints on the project that weren't already in place because of the biological opinion that we negotiated, because of our coastal development permit, because of our environmental document, already considered a number of these things. So on one hand, I was pleasantly surprised to see that. So in that respect, the stream bed alteration agreement is really not costing the city anything other than the delay costs that it caused. But it really did not do anything in terms of impacting the project. It didn't impact our plans for that erosional feature, and we did not change in one bit the way that we were going about modifying that erosional feature. So, and that was part of the, part of the argument that we'd made early on to CDFW was that we already had so many mitigations in place from our environmental document and our biological opinion, that really a stream bed alteration agreement was just redundant. And at the end of the day, that was the case. It really does not add anything to any of our avoidance or mitigation measures that we need to implement.
And it's my understanding that they had an opportunity to provide this input earlier in the process and apparently did not do so. Is that correct?
We started the discussions with them back in June of last year, and there are some unique requirements in our coastal development permit. On another similar project, we would have made our own determination, and we would have moved forward, and we wouldn't have necessarily engaged CDFW in this manner. If you go back and look at our original environmental document, as well as the addendum that we put together, we did a stream bed, excuse me, we did a stream bed delineation report that was an appendix to our environmental document and appendix to our addendum. And both of those very clearly stated what our position was on that erosional feature. And that environmental document was reviewed by CDFW. We paid, we're assuming it was reviewed by CDFW. We did pay the fee that's required by CDFW in order for them to review it, and we did not receive any comments back on it. So again, we did not have any indication Uh, and we did not receive any comments back on it. So again, we did not have any indication that we were going to need a stream bed alteration agreement. Um, and, and that's really where the, the issue really, really came from is that our coastal development permit specifically stated that we needed to have something in writing from a number of these different environmental, uh, these environmental stakeholders that either said, yes, you need a permit or no, you don't need a permit.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and you said you're going to be opening the bids on the conveyance system tomorrow. How many bids have you received?
Um, all of the bids are due at the same time.
Oh, I see. So you don't really know.
Yeah, we, we don't know yet. Um, I think, uh, the information that I, I can, um, I can quote is we did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting that, that was the meeting that I referred to earlier, uh, that occurred on July 7th. Um, and, uh, we did have, I believe we had six general contractors there, uh, that could, uh, that could bid the project. Um, so I know we can't have any more than six because we only had six attend. Um, and, and, and I don't think we're going to get all six, uh, um, sending in bids. Um, but that's kind of the maximum number. And so we'll know at two o'clock tomorrow how many.
All right. And given, uh, that then you're going to review the bids, when would you expect work to begin?
So, um, the plan is to, uh, review the bids and bring, uh, an award recommendation to council on, uh, September 22nd. So the second meeting in September. Um, so that, uh, after that, uh, contract is awarded, if council decides to award the contract, um, then we would issue a notice to proceed, um, pretty quickly after that. And, um, obviously it's going to take some time for the contractor to mobilize and to, um, and to submit, uh, preliminary submittals and for us to review and approve all those submittals before they can get started kind of in earnest. Uh, but we're looking at sometime in the October, November time frame for the, the actual start of construction activities.
Okay. And I know that you have presented to us previously plans for informing people along the way, but I'm assuming that you would start doing that as soon as, uh, you kind of have the contract in place and you know where they're going to start and you would, uh, implement that process for notifying business owners and residents of the affected areas. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So we talked a little bit about the way that the contract documents are, um, are, are put together. We have, uh, constraints that the contractor needs to, um, needs to abide by. Uh, but they are committed, they are required to provide us, one of the first things they're required to provide us is, is their baseline schedule uh, that will show, um, how they're planning to negotiate those constraints and, and do the project. So we'll be able to see once we award that product, it's very soon after we award the project, we'll have a roadmap of how the contractor is, is planning on, uh, is planning on constructing the project. So we'll know exactly when, uh, different areas of the city are going to be impacted. And then based on that, we'll work with, uh, our public outreach consultant and, uh, and put together our outreach plan, uh, based on, based on that baseline schedule.
Okay. And, uh, you mentioned the Caltrans permit. Um, I'm assuming you're fairly well along that process and you've been working with them. So, uh, you do not foresee any problems with getting it? Is that correct?
We don't. We started working with Caltrans on, on the permit, um, back in, uh, this, I didn't say the spring of 2019. Um, we've been working with them on that, uh, working on a strategy to make sure that that was kept, uh, within the local jurisdiction and processed by the, by the local jurisdiction. And as I indicated, um, we had planned to, uh, to have that permit, um, uh, a month or so ago, a couple of months ago, uh, and, and because of some delays, we, we haven't yet seen it. Um, but, uh, but we're, we're confident that we're going to, we're going to get it, um, before we start construction.
Okay. Uh, and moving on to the injection wells, um, how many wells are planned at this point? Do you know?
Um, that's part of the work that GSI is going to be refining, uh, in their next phase of work is what exactly the capacity is of, uh, of an individual well. And that's part of the, the, that's part of the injection, uh, the injection, uh, pilot injection testing that we're, we want to do, um, or that we're going to be doing. That's going to help refine the design criteria for the well and will tell us. Or ultimately, we're going to be injecting 825, up to 825 acre feet a year. Um, the work that GSI is going to tell us, uh, throughout the rest of this year, beginning of next year is, uh, each well can do 200 acre feet per year, so you need four of them, or they can do 250 acre feet a year. So you might need three of them or, or whatever that might be. So that we should know that, uh, here in this next round of, of hydro geo work.
Okay. And we know that this aspect of the project is, um, has been delayed. Uh, can you clarify why it does not impact the water board's TSO order for project completion?
That's a good question. Uh, exactly. The, the, the time schedule order specifically, uh, is related to, uh, the 301H waiver, uh, that the city, uh, the city currently has for, uh, discharge at the existing wastewater treatment plant that requires full secondary treatment to the ocean, uh, by February 28th of 2023. Um, so when we start up the plant in September of 2022 and start discharging to the ocean, uh, that's when we've met compliance, uh, and, 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 and taking flow, uh, and running it through the advanced treatment, uh, and, and taking it to the injection wells, um, is, is not within the purview of the time schedule.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and just a follow-up question on the SRF funding. Um, we are on the funding list, which means that we have essentially been approved for up to, and as I recall, it was like $105 million of funding. So is that correct? Obviously they're not going to give us that much because they know we have the WIFIA money. But we have essentially been, uh, put on the funding list by SRF. So it's not like we're applying at this point.
That's correct. Yes, we were, we were, uh, we got on the funding list last year for the upcoming fiscal year. And so SRF, uh, has, um, SRF definitely has some incentive to quickly move through the process and get a funding agreement negotiated with us, um, because they're going to have, uh, on our heels will be a new crop of, of folks that are on the fundable list for this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, and so, um, but, but you are correct. Uh, we're currently, um, looking at, um, right around, I think it's about $70 million in, uh, in funding, uh, from, from SRF. Uh, and they have indicated that, uh, the goal is to, uh, is to get the full $5 million in grants. Um, and that is the maximum that we could receive from, from grants. And, and I will say that we also, um, just recently, within the last, um, in the last, since last time that I've, uh, spoken to council, um, our Title 16 feasibility study has been, uh, has been approved, um, by the folks, uh, at the Title 16 program. Uh, now we haven't seen them release any funding for this year. And there's some things with, um, with, with Congress and everything that's made, uh, with, with, that's delayed that. Um, but if we don't see them release anything this year, uh, then any costs that we incur after our feasibility study has been approved, which is essentially now, um, we could get in the future. And so we can continue to go after, uh, that grant funding, uh, to help offset any of the, any of the low interest loans, uh, that we're getting from the other agency.
And it's my understanding that you've been in communication with them, so you know that that money is still available. It's not that the state is not funding this anymore. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. Yeah, it's, it's just a matter of, again, them going through, uh, and, and completing their review, uh, and then, uh, and then negotiating the, the actual, the actual agreement with them, the, kind of the nuts and bolts of, of, of the funding agreement.
Okay. And I think that the mayor asked, uh, this next question I had, which was, we know that we've, um, already spent, uh, almost $24 million through June 30th. Um, but you expect about 45 million? I want to just emphasize that, uh, by the end of December. Is that right? And what will that be? What will be happening in the next three months, four months?
Yeah, we're going to, so, so that's a good question. We're going to see a ramp up in, uh, in construction on the WRF site in terms of hard construction. Um, earthwork is the majority of, of earthwork, uh, in addition to, or with the exception of a small portion of earthwork at the very far end of the site, is going to be wrapping up here really at the end of the month. Uh, and, um, we're going to be continuing to move forward with a lot of underground infrastructure. Um, so the pipelines and the electrical duct banks throughout the, throughout the plant. Um, that's going to be, a lot of that underground work is really going to dominate the, the next couple of months of construction, uh, at the WRF site.
Okay. And I know that there are people who, uh, continue to recommend that the council stop the current WRF project. But what are the legal consequences for doing that? Uh, what provisions are in, uh, current contracts if the city were to default on completing the work that we've contracted?
Yeah, so I think that, um, that's a, that's a good question. And, uh, I think the, the real, um, the real impact would have to do with the design build agreement itself. Um, in terms of any of the other professional service agreement, um, Corolla's agreement, uh, or, or any of the other technical team members. Um, that, we, we serve, uh, at will to the city. Um, and, and there really is no, um, fiscal ramifications for, uh, um, for, for ending any of those contracts. But things get a little stickier with the, um, the design build agreement. So there is language in there, uh, regarding, uh, termination for convenience. Uh, and it, and it does stipulate that, um, that the design build team, uh, is, um, is, can go after, uh, lost overhead and profit, uh, for the project. Uh, and so it, it's clearly outlined in, in the design build agreement. Um, but, uh, stopping construction on, on, on the site is not as easy as just stopping construction and, and, and walking away. Um, there are some things that would need to be done, uh, at, at, at a fairly sizable cost to return the site to its existing state and other things. Uh, and, as well as, uh, as well as anything that we need to be negotiating with the design build team, uh, in terms of their, uh, their lost profits and, and lost opportunities on other projects.
And would the city be obligated to pay back monies it has received from SRF and WIFIA?
Um, that is a good question and I don't have the answer to that question. Um, fortunately, uh, I guess fortunately, I have never had, uh, to deal with, with that type of situation on any other projects that I've worked with. Well, WIFIA obviously is a, is a new program. Uh, this is the first WIFIA project, um, uh, that I have experience with. Uh, but I've never had, uh, a default on any, um, any SRF loan. Uh, and I don't know what, what exactly would, would happen there. Um, but, uh, I, I don't know if the city would be, um, without having a planning loan agreement in front of me, uh, if the city would be liable for paying that money back. I, I imagine that that could be one recourse, uh, that the state would have.
Okay. And my last question, uh, I know you talked about in your presentation, the fact that although construction costs for the project have increased, there, there is no increase in rates for the rate payer. Uh, in fact, we are still, um, hoping to have a decrease in the rates. And I just wanted to know, um, when, uh, the council is going to review, uh, we, we have an annual review of rates and I'm, I think I know the answer, but when are we going to do that?
Yeah, I, I would, I would defer to, uh, City Manager Collins or, or, or Ms. Callaway, uh, to answer the specifics in terms of the timing, uh, for, for when might come back for, for the rate review, for when we can, we come back to the rate review process. Uh, Jen or Scott, can one of you, one of you guys answer the specifics there in terms of the timing?
So, um, this is Mayor Heding. I will tell you that, um, we agendize that as an item, um, for future agenda. And in discussions with staff, preliminarily, we're looking at the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Then those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's, uh, move on to Councilmember Davis. Sir, questions, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, Eric, did you say that you have, um, a requirement for another stream bed alteration agreement connected to the conveyance project?
That's correct. We, we do. Um, even though we are not getting, uh, Section 401 or 404 permits for, um, or any stream bed work that we're doing. Um, and, as you remember, we are doing, uh, a trenchless crossing, uh, of, of Little Morro Creek. Uh, and so, um, we are not having to get permits from the regional board or for, or from the US Army Corps of Engineers. We do have to get a stream bed alteration agreement, um, from Fish and Wildlife for, for that crossing. And so that's really what, uh, is wrapped up in, uh, in, in that stream bed alteration agreement.
Would there be any possibility that we would run into similar delays for something as simple as this one?
Uh, it, it could be a possibility. The, the benefit here is that when we did our initial notification, uh, this is not something that's unknown to, uh, Fish and Wildlife. They have seen this before. When we did our initial notification back in late February, we were initially told by Fish and Wildlife that we should, uh, we should keep everything together and do one single stream bed alteration agreement for the pipelines and, uh, and the, uh, treatment plant. Uh, we submitted that notification and we got word back from them that, uh, they would like us to split those up into separate notifications. So, um, they've seen this before and we, we're submitting, uh, the, the updated notification to them, uh, to, to review. And so it's similar information that they have already seen and we've already been in discussions with them on this.
Okay. And, um, is, is William Brothers, the subcontractor, doing the concrete work?
Uh, yes, they are the subcontractor doing the concrete work.
And they are semi-local, being that they are from Los Osos? Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
And do we have any estimate of how many, uh, employees they are using who live locally?
Um, I don't have an estimate of the number of employees, but I can, uh, but I can get that for you. Um, I, I can get that for you. And I have an idea of what the contract amounts are, um, for, for them. I believe their initial contract amount is about a million dollars, but I do not know, uh, how many local employees that they have, um, working on the project.
Okay. Uh, it's not critical that I know that it's, but I do appreciate that we have a local contractor doing work on our project. And that's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Addis, questions, please?
My only real question, I think you already covered it and Councilmember McPherson asked, but I'll just ask it again. Um, are rates going to go up because of all of the problems that the project has encountered?
Um, so, uh, thank you, Councilmember Addis, for the, the question. Um, as, as we looked at back in, in one of the slides that was shown back in Q, the end of Q3, so several months ago, uh, when our project budget went up initially to the 130.6 million, uh, we had Barter Wells essentially redo their rate analysis they had done in 2018 and, and look, uh, at what the impacts of the, uh, additional costs were or additional budget was. Uh, and when you bring that into account and you assume, uh, the SRF money at a pretty conservative, uh, interest rate and you, um, roll in, uh, WIFIA at the interest rate that we actualized at, the, the less than 0.9%. Um, the rates are, uh, the rate impact is, is lower than what was estimated in the 2018 rate study. So, uh, the answer to your question is, is the increase will, will not have a, will not impact, uh, rates in, in, in the near year.
So we don't see, we don't see rates going up. I know there's been delays and cost increases, but we don't see rate payers needing to pay more money for this project than is already on their belts now.
That is correct.
And then, um, just in layperson's terms, is there anything we can do to kind of get back on track, um, moving forward in terms of the schedule and the budget?
Um, and, as I mentioned, uh, earlier, um, we are trying to, wherever we can, uh, to value engineer, um, any items. I think there's, uh, one of the items that we're currently dealing with is, um, is some of the things that we, some of the concessions that we made to, um, to Fish and Wildlife in negotiation of the biological opinion. And, and we are going down the road with them, uh, currently in looking at a more cost-effective way to meet the intent of what was negotiated in that agreement. Um, so, um, that's what we are doing to, uh, to try to reduce, uh, costs and bring them, um, back closer to, uh, the original $126 million budget. Uh, in, in terms of, in terms of schedule, um, uh, I think we need to see what comes back with, uh, and once we have the pipeline designer onboard, um, we can see if there's anything that we can do to, um, to try to, uh, pull up. to pull up the schedule for the main component of the project, the conveyance facilities and the work. And then, we're hoping in the next couple of months that we can really push on the hydro geo work and pull up the construction for the injection wells, so that the injection well construction overlaps as much as possible with the other construction efforts, so that we can finish earlier and reduce the amount of construction management and program management time and cost on the project. That is our goal.
And even if all of that failed, rates still wouldn't go up beyond where they are now?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all for me. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your--
Thank you, Councilmember. With that, I will go ahead and open up public comment for Item C-1. This is business item C-1, and I'll ask the city clerk if we have any hands raised for Item C-1.
Yes. One second, please. Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weiss was the first to have his hand raised for public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, council, staff, citizens. I want to begin by thanking Bill Bowes, who resigned 7/21/20 from the CFAC Committee. He brought 40 years of experience. I appreciate everyone who has volunteered on this project and have concern for the future oversight. My first three questions were answered, so I want to thank you for that. But my first question I do have is, how many change orders have there been? And I have a comment about the 1.5 million reserve and why there's no concern for that. My second question is, why refer to the soil slip when the geological survey says, by definition, it occurs during and only during heavy rainfall? And in that whole month of May, we only had 0.49 inches of rainfall, and so I'm concerned about that terminology. Is, question three, is the city negotiating with Cayucus, as they own 40% of our plant and outfall, they plan to disconnect by this December, do we have a budget for the cost we will pay to Cayucus in 2021? Question four, what will CFAC's role moving forward be considering the loss of such experienced program managers? And question five, the status of the AT&amp;T box at the South Bay and Quintana intersection for our conveyance? And last, what is the plan to fix our leaky pipes going to our wells, given the 3218s we've had in 2007, 2015, and 2018, where those were supposed to be repaired? Thank you very much for your time, and I give back my 1 minute and 13 seconds. Hope you have a good meeting.
Thank you, John. Next individual for public comment, please.
Just Sedley. I think you had your hand raised.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Sedley.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, sir. I had a number of questions about the landslide, and I've decided not to ask the majority of them because they reveal strategy and that kind of thing, and the city attorney is right. But the remaining question that I do have, that I don't feel reveals any strategy, is what is the process? What steps does this process have to go through in terms of determining who should pay this $340,000 or half million, whatever it actually is? What is the process going forward? I also wanted to comment about Mr. Heller's commentary. I too think that we need to arrange our contracts to be much smarter, specifically in regards to the WRF plant. What the Department of Fish and Wildlife decides is entirely outside of the city's control. And there's a number of things that could happen with the conveyance system that could be entirely outside of the city's control. And shouldn't we be acting smarter in the way that we arrange our contracts to not be responsible for those things? I.e., what if in the conveyance system, significant cultural artifacts were found? What if there's natural flooding or whatever that prevents the conveyance system from going in? These things are entirely outside of the city's control, and to me, you should not, you should not be in a contract, a responsibility for the city to have to pay for these kinds of funds, such as we've had to do for the red-legged frogs and paying Black and Beach $2.5 million for things, again, outside of our control. That's just, to me, being smart and proactive going forward, and I would encourage the council to ask for that on behalf of the ratepayers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's my comments.
Thank you, Dan. Madam Clerk, any other hands raised?
Yes, Ms. Weinhold.
Sorry, I'm now unmuted, is that okay?
Yes, Betty, welcome.
Okay, thank you. So I won't ask all my comments that I submitted earlier in writing, though some of them are still applicable. I think the first one in regard to CFAC, and I also would thank the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee for asking such good questions that led to some information for us to read about in the report. And I got the impression that implied from the staff report that you were going to discuss CFAC's role in the future, and yet there's no discussion in the staff report about that. So if you could just comment on whether that's part of this item or not. I also would comment on my item number two regarding the landslide, which I think is what it is rather than a soil slip. And regard to that, noticing that the project engineer chose to move ahead with construction before securing a permit, knowingly did that, and it was received by the Coastal Commission staff, but it seems to me that Corolo actually took the risk here for beginning construction before the permit, and maybe they, as much as the design-build team are responsible for what happened. Regarding the injection wells, that was more of a comment that I was making that truly, if it takes a slowdown of injecting less water in order to get our permit, my question would then be, how many months or years will it take to get up to the 825 acre feet if we have to start at a lower amount? Would be my question. And I, was my understanding that Caltrans needed to get permission from Sacramento for this project, and I'm wondering if that's true, and if that's part of the delay? And my other question was about Vistra and where that stood, and that was already revealed, what the outcome was, that we're waiting for the court to make its opinion in writing. And then regarding to the finances, that's been gone over quite a bit, but I think you hopefully get the feel of the people that when you have to re-baseline the schedule, when you have to keep moving up the guaranteed maximum price, I'm not sure how our rates won't be going up because you're raising the price, and you've got a little bit of cushion, but a lot of that cushion's being used up. I truly don't see how we're going to get any kind of kickback to the ratepayer, because change orders will continue and other things will come up that are unknown. And so that continues for me, and I will continue to ask, when do you say more, more, more is enough, and when do you cut our financial losses?
Thank you, Betty.
And then, please put our ratepayers and businesses first.
Thank you so much, Betty. Madam Clerk, any other hands raised?
That is time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. This is a receive, this is the quarterly report that is to be received and reviewed, obviously, by council. I'll ask staff if they're looking for any guidance, abundant beyond the council dictated guidance that was given on January 28, 2020, to CFAC. Are you seeking any clarification, staff, that wasn't evident in the staff report? Are you looking for any other commentary with regard to CFAC roles? Mr. Collins?
I'll jump in, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we are, and I think the point is taken. We were referencing the summary of funding sources, disbursement requests that were included in the staff report, that was the previous direction, and that probably could have been worded better in the subject, so apologies for that.
Okay. Not looking for any feedback then, specifically with regard to CFAC, perhaps Mr. Casares, if you're there. I did take notes on some questions that had been asked for follow-up, and let me just give you the ones that I jotted down. Mr. Weiss asked about the number of change orders. It's right there in the staff report, if that had been raised, read, I should say. It's very clear and evident, but I'll ask you to reiterate what's in the staff report with regard to, how many change orders have there been?
So I'm just going to the appropriate page in the progress report. The last round was 24, and the first, I believe, was 12, so a total of 40, there's a total of 44 is the total between the three tables, and just for the audience, in the report, that's tables 12, 13, and 14 show a breakdown of all the PCOs.
Thank you for that. Anybody who would like to comment with regard to where we are in our negotiations with Cayucus and their share of costs and/or payment for the current wastewater treatment facility, given the fact that they may be going offline soon? Any commentary from either Mr. Collins or Ms. Callaway? Or Eric, if you have comments?
That, it's a good question. You know, I've been in touch with General Manager Raccoon, and you know, I'm not so certain that that date is that exacting, but you know, we would have a strategy in place if, in fact, they are able to go offline before the end of the fiscal year, and that would be a discussion with council. As far as the other long-term needs and the responsibilities that they still hold with the existing plant, that's subject to future discussions and negotiations as well.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. Weiss asked about the CFAC role, clearly, that has been articulated in the January 28, 2020 meeting, and outlined specifically by council. That direction has been given and been referred to numerous times, so I'll just refer him to that meeting, January 28, 2020, where the council moved to expand CFAC roles to cover a number of areas. And then the, Mr. Casares, status of the AT&amp;T box, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but maybe you can comment on that?
Yeah, so AT&amp;T had installed a, and I'm getting clarification on this current, right as we speak, but an AT&amp;T box was installed in the middle of our pipeline alignment near the corner of Quintana and South Bay Boulevard just recently, within the last several months, I believe it was in June. Actually, a member of the community called it to our, noticed it and called it to our attention, and I believe we've handled that via addenda in the plans and specifications, and we've made the bidders aware, and we've changed the alignment in order to facilitate the location of that box.
Okay, thank you for that. And a quick update on where we are with regard to capital improvement projects, quote-unquote, Mr. Weiss's question about fixing the leaky pipes.
So, as you recall, we issued a contract with Cannon Engineering for design in the first phase of the One Water Plan improvements, so that is underway. They've completed survey work in our proceeding forward with the initial design for the collection system improvements. In addition, they're working on water system improvements in and around the netmeg and Elena tank locations.
Thank you, Mr. Leibig, for that. I appreciate that. And then, with regard to Mr. Sedley's question, process used to negotiate the landslide issue, Mr. Casares, you covered that in your remarks this evening, and I'll just refer him back to the tape to review that again. And lastly, with regard to Ms. Weinhold's, asking about the injection wells, I may not restate the question correctly, but how many months or years would be required if we can't get to the needed flow? Ms. Casares, did you understand maybe what she was asking there?
I think I did. The purpose of the additional modeling that we're doing and looking at some additional flows is not necessarily that we wouldn't construct the infrastructure immediately to be able to inject the total flow. It would just be that our initial, our initial question, or excuse me, our initial ask of DDW may be, in our permit that we received from them, we may say something to the effect of, we're asking to be able to, to you to permit us for 500 acre feet a year, knowing that we want to get to 825 acre feet per year, and that may be something that we include in that permit that says, after successfully demonstrating the ability to inject this much over this period of time, the city could increase to 600 acre feet per year, 700 acre feet per year, or 800 acre feet per year. Again, that's a negotiation with Division of Drinking Water, and as I mentioned, we've submitted our initial Title 22 engineering report, which is a lot of effort, and it took a lot of time to prepare, but it's hard to get Division of Drinking Water to give you any concrete comments until they receive that document, so stay tuned. We should have some more in-depth discussions with DDW, and we'll have more to report back.
Okay, thank you. And then, Ms. Weinhold's also asked about Caltrans, is there a review required by, quote-unquote, Sacramento?
That is a question that I would need to follow up with. I've got a couple folks in my office that have been working closely with the design team and working on this process through bidding. And this may be a question that Rob might be able to answer as well from our initial, from our discussion with Caltrans. Our goal initially was to keep it from going to Sacramento, and I want to say that we're somewhere in between in terms of getting some sign off from Sacramento, but also keeping it, the primary approval was held with the local jurisdiction. Rob, I don't know if you have a better answer to that. I don't remember the specifics right off the top of my head.
So originally talking with Caltrans District 5 permits, the number was $1 million in the state right-of-way, could be approved locally. If it exceeded $1 million in the state's right-of-way, then this design exception had to go to Sacramento for approval. So the design exception that we're looking at is construction of a parallel pipeline within the freeway portion of the state's right-of-way. So even though it's off on the shoulder in the dirt area, it's still within the freeway portion, so I believe that design exception can be approved locally. I believe they're having some folks in Sacramento review it from a technical standpoint, but I'm not sure that they need to have headquarters approve that exception.
Thank you, Rob, for that explanation. I do appreciate that. Now with that, this is a receiving file of the quarterly report, unless there are any closing comments, we'll move ahead to Item C-2.
I have a couple comments, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would just ask the management team to expedite the receipt of the two outstanding proposed change orders from the ORF project. I'd like to see those much sooner than later. I'd like to see those much sooner than later. Also would like the management team to revise the contract documents as necessary so that any broken pipelines by the pipeline contractor, whether known or unknown, shall be the responsibility of that contractor. It's industry standard language. If that means renegotiating the price, then that's what the city needs to do. Otherwise, it's a green light and a never-ending stream of proposed change orders coming forward from that, from that project. And lastly, I would like to see the program management team take on the concept of what can we do to decrease rates rather than adopting the mindset of, well, as long as the rates don't go up, we're okay. I think the team needs to work to reduce rates for the residents of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yes, I would like to make a few comments. I want to, first of all, say how much I appreciate the thoroughness and the honesty and the transparency that Eric provides in his reports. He has shared with us all of the problems that he's had to deal with and how he has dealt with them, and I truly appreciate that. And as for the rates, and I think Ms. Weinholz also said she doesn't understand how the residents can get a rate decrease, and they can get a rate decrease because of the wonderful financing that our project team was able to arrange with a low interest rate of 0.83% on a major portion of the project, so that the long-term cost of the project, which is what the rate payers are paying for, is much less than the increase that we've seen in the cost of the project. So we will be able to reduce rates in the future, but I know that our project team is being very thoughtful and realizing that we need to know exactly what the whole project costs before we talk about reducing rates. But we have saved millions of dollars in debt service costs, and so that is how we're going to be able to keep the rates lower than what we have already approved in the 218. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Other comments? Councilmember Davis or Addis, any closing comments?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Addis, any closing comments?
I'll just reiterate my gratitude for the thoroughness of the reports and appreciate the job done, and appreciate hearing that rates aren't going to go up, even though there's been some issues with the project. I'm still optimistic that this, you know, the project will get back on track, but I'm most excited to hear that my water bills, my water and sewer bill's not going to go up, so thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to thank council for, all council members, for their in-depth and thorough review of the report. It's appropriate to ask very probing questions, to challenge staff with regard to costs, because it is in the best interest of this community to minimize the impact on rates, potentially, that could incur as a result of this project. Two pieces of that are extremely important, as I believe mentioned by Councilmember McPherson. One is the cost of capital or the sunk costs associated with actually building the project. And although we've established an initial budget that has moved through a number of project change orders, primarily as we've vetted before, a large number of these have occurred as a result of what I'll call inadequate or a poorly written initial RFP on the part of a previous program manager. And I'm not trying to point fingers, but I'm just stating the obvious, in my opinion, based upon a number of extensive reviews by this council and previous councils, that issue has, did result in the actual termination of that agreement with the previous program manager and us bringing on a really world-renowned organization, Corolla Water, and Mr. Casares' is project manager. Given that, with regard to the capital pieces, I know as a subcommittee member with Councilmember McPherson meeting weekly with staff to vet this, we are looking at every aspect of cost reduction that we possibly can. I'm not saying that there aren't opportunities to continue to try to value-engineer this and bring down the cost of the project, because that is the ultimate goal of this council, is deliver a quality project at the lowest possible cost to ratepayers that we can. We have received, on the other side, besides capital costs, unprecedented low interest rates that will far outweigh the impact of the increase in capital costs when you look at the total debt service costs over the life of the project. I am convinced, given previous year's performance with regard to the State Revolving Fund, or SRF, that we will receive the SRF funding for the remainder of the project, and as Ms. Callaway talked about, we do have a cushion in terms of the way that the rates were calculated in the initial rate study, in that we made the assumption that we would be using bond rate money to finance that debt, when indeed, the SRF funding should come in at unprecedentedly low interest rates as well, even based upon previous assumptions of somewhere around 1.7% interest. If you look at it today, if we were able to ink it, it's about 1.3%. So there are further opportunities to even, to a greater degree, reduce debt service costs. However, debt service reduction doesn't allow us the ability to not continue to pound down costs, and I think we all agree that that's an important thing to do. We agreed on an annual basis to look at the amount of money we collect from our ratepayers. That has been agendized by this council and will be on the agenda in September, whereupon we will evaluate the current costs of the project and determine if there are opportunities to decrease the amount of dollars collected from our community members and businesses for this project. Do not lose sight of the fact that this is an innovative project that will provide water resiliency, drought resiliency, and a future source of water for our children and grandchildren due to the reclamation component of this project. Because of its innovative nature, the federal government through the WIFIA program recognized two years ago that very innovative nature and awarded us, as one of 12 communities, a WIFIA loan. And thank goodness, we had an innovative project that provides resiliency not only for droughts, but ensures a future water supply for generations to come, because that specific design has resulted, and will result, in millions of dollars in debt service savings. And we should be proud as a council and a community for the type of project that we are moving forward. I just want to thank council, I want to thank Mr. Casares, our program manager, our staff as well, Mr. Collins, Ms. Callaway, for the work that you continue to do. I know that I have spoken with you independently, and the subcommittee continues to ask very pointed questions. Lastly, I want to thank CFAC for the deep dive that they have done with regard to review of a lot of the data. They, if you looked at the questions asked, they were numerous, maybe even voluminous, but they did even provide a further deep-deep down look at costs associated with this project, and I'm very grateful to the committee members on CFAC for the review and for the input that they continue to give this city council. Thank you. With that, we will move to item C-2, approval of contract with Digital West to provide broadband internet services to the city for regular operations and continuity of operations, needs during emergencies and power shutdowns. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Collins. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and community members. This is a presentation from our fire chief, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank him and the team, our EOC team, for being out in front on the public safety power shutdown program that was announced last year prior to the fire season. And we did luckily come out unscathed on that, didn't have a prolonged power shutdown during that time, and other areas of the state did experience several day shutdowns, which thankfully we didn't experience, but we learned a lot from those communities. And part of that is the ability for the city to continue to operate and provide services to our community during a prolonged shutdown or other emergency. And the good work of the fire chief in connecting with those communities and learning from PG&E, how best to be prepared, they bring forward solutions to city council, which were approved, and one of those was to address our phone and internet systems and our power that's provided to those, and do it in a safe way and in a cost-effective way that also has benefits for our ongoing operations. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the chief, who's going to explain briefly what the PSPS is again, since it's been a year, since you probably all heard it every day, and discuss the Digital West project and how it'll benefit us and how it'll be paid for, and then answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Collins and council. It's good to see all you guys tonight, and I think we all know that the weather has changed in California, causing these catastrophic fires that are threatening not just homes, but now communities. I mean, this is all a result from the campfire up in Butte County two years ago, where a complete town of paradise, is very similar in population to Morro Bay, was just completely destroyed. The cause of the fire was PG&E faulty equipment, and they had all the different factors too up in that area that had nothing to do with PG&E, but on their location, their escape routes, their way to aggress into the communities, their water supply, it was all challenging. And so it was like a perfect storm from up there. But because of that, California Public Utility Commission has instructed the three major power companies to come up with a plan to cut our power in areas where we have fire watch or fire alert that's occurring, so none of their equipment during a high-wind event would cause any fires in the future. Last year, they had eight PSPS events, that is Public Safety Power Shut-Off events, all the way from the West Bay to the East Bay in Alameda County, to Nevada County, Bubba County, and even though it was a hardship for the citizens up in Northern California, they had positive results. They didn't have any fire start from their equipment during their power shut-offs. So to PG&E and also to the Public Utility Commission, it made a difference, and it's going to stay here for a long time. And San Diego County's been doing a lot longer with Southern California Edison, but I can see this go on for decades now in California. So the staff report basically recommends the city council to authorize the city manager to execute a contractor agreement with Digital West to provide broadband internet services to support regular city operations, as well as the continuity of operations during a prolonged power shut-off and other emergencies. Now, there are going to be times where we're going to have an emergency, where there's going to be pockets of town that may lose power, such as during a storm, a tsunami, an earthquake, but we're going to talk just a little bit later about how it's going to affect 100% of our town, and that's where it's going to basically threaten the continuity of operations in our city. So the financial impact is, there's two components to this contract. First, it's a contract cost to provide fiber optic lines to the fire department, city hall, community center, police department, public works, community development building, and wireless connectivity to Harvard Department wastewater treatment plant, that's the current location, and the corporation yard. The amount of this component is $50,000. And the ongoing internet connectivity services provided to the city, to all facilities listed above, the monthly cost of the service is $2,150. The contract is for five years, 60 months, which brings the total to, just for the service for the broadband, $129,000 for five years. So the city council did approve the budget amendment in 2019, 2020 budget year, this current year, correction, last year, for the construction of $50,000, which was carried forward into 2021 as a capital project. The city budgeted ongoing internet connectivity costs for one year in of the contract for $25,800 for this fiscal year today, and no budget increases needed. Moving forward, the city will need to budget $25,800 a year for the 21, 22 through the 24, 25 budget years to an amount of $103,000, $103,200. So the total contract is $179,000. So as we discussed before, the Public Utility Commission established and directed the power companies to come up ways and policies and plans, when are they going to cut off power? PG&E basically is going to cut off power in two different methods. One is if we have a fire alert or a fire watch, if it's a fire alert or fire watch that has a red flag warning and relative humidity levels are below 20%, and we're forecast to have winds above 25 miles an hour with gusts up to 45 miles an hour, and also site-specific conditions such as temperature, terrain, and local climate, and if we also have a fire already in process in our county. The last, the fire we had last week, the pond fire just outside of Preston and Pozo, we did have to have a contingency plan. There is a line that runs, it's called Diablo Midway line, that powers all of Morro Bay through our switchyard and behind the Morro Bay Power Plant. If the fire would have progressed south past Las Pletus Road, we were having a contingency plan drawn up to make sure those power lines were shut down for the safety of the firefighters, aircraft, and also for the equipment, because fires at times, even with those power lines 30, 40 feet up in the air, the smoke, the carbon, the heat causes damage, it can cause catastrophic failure other places on the grid if we have problems. But if, if the fire crossed south past Las Pletus Road, there is a chance that Morro Bay, a large portion of it or all of it, would have been shut off for one to two days. Cutting the power can be done quickly, but getting the power back on, they have to inspect each of the lines to make sure the power is good before they allow energy to go back to those lines. So the private utility companies have the sole discretion on when they're going to shut down electrical power without the guidance from the local and regional emergency managers. Now, we had a general idea when I was on the incident management team down in Pozo, what was happening, but they didn't consult the county or the cities. They don't have to seek permission, and they're going to do it when they feel their equipment is going to fail or it can cause a fire. So in California, we are blessed that we have a major connection to the state and federal grid through the PG&E circuit yard behind the power plant. We have two different lines, and if you can follow my cursor, if you can see it, this line here, this is called the Diablo Gateway. This connects to the state and national grid line outside of Chalona, no, correct, outside of Kalanga on the Highway 5 corridor. This line here is called the Diablo Midway, and this connects to the Highway 5 corridor around beautiful town of Buttonwillow. And this is the line that was being challenged during the fire of last week. This line is a feed off both these lines, and it's a discharge line that goes past Diablo Canyon. Currently today, Diablo Canyon is not connected to Morro Bay like it was in the past when Morro Bay Power Plant was attached to PG&E. So in general, if we were to have fire threat or fire watch days on the west side of Paso Rubles, Adelaide, all the way up to Cambria and on the coast, there is a large probability that everything north of Taco Bell on Main Street will be shut off in Morro Bay between one to four days. You probably heard me say last year it was between one and six days. Well, they, they were instructed by the Public Utility Commission to come up with a much faster process inspecting their lines, so now they're telling us one to four days. If we are to have a fire alert or fire watch on the, from the gun range all the way to the east side, northeast side of San Luis Obispo, Rojo Grande, Lopez Lake, Nopomo, all the way down to Highway 166, we have an opportunity to be shut off at 100% until between one to four days. So the threat is still there for us. Now, the state Utility Commission has instructed PG&E to come up with a plan, to come up with micro switches so they can break up our communities a lot better so that they don't have to shut off the whole town, and we are on the list. the whole town. And we are on the list, but because Northern California has been on the hot seat for the last couple of years with fire season, especially with the increase of Diablo winds up in Butte and Nevada County areas, that they are, they're concentrating up there for the next couple of years. They're hoping to get back into our town in a couple of years to give us more micro switches and help secure us a little better. So what we did as a city, we came to the council in October of 2019 to talk about, in addition to our emergency management plan, to deal with our electrical power shut offs that is in concert with all of our other hazards in our emergency plans, such as flood, earthquake, and tsunamis. Our plan does comply with state and federal mandates that will function well originally, but also qualify if there's ever possible federal or state assistance on funding. So part of our power shut off plan is, and I'm not going to read all these objectives out of the plan, but I'll just paraphrase some of these items, is that we want to provide safety to the public. We want to make sure we don't have an interruption to the emergency services, police department, fire department, and harbor department. We want to make sure our water waste treatment plant is still running, and all the waste lift stations are working. We want to make sure that we are taking care of our medically dependent citizens in our community. We also, if, depends how long this plan can be, we may have to develop resource centers for charging of cell phones, scooters, wheelchairs, also for providing refrigeration for, for medication for some of our citizens. We want to be able to coordinate with our regional partners and allied agencies. We want to make sure that we have complete coordination between all affected public agencies, and we want to make sure the management objectives and efforts are focused on serving, safeguarding, and protecting our citizens. So what this contract does bring is that it'll provide a new fiber optic route to the Harbor Street Fire Station. They found a new way to do it, which was cost efficient. It allows us to move all our city servers and phone system hardware to the fire station, into our computer room, which is climate controlled and has plenty of space for that. Digital West will be able to provide essential city buildings' broadband services. It will connect to the city hall, police station, community services, public works building, recreation, and the future waste reclamation facility, all by fiber optics. It will provide high speed microwave broadband, will be delivered from the roof of the fire station to the harbor department and the courtyard, and also to the current wastewater treatment plant, which we all know will be temporary. Digital's West hub in Salas Abispo, where they connect to the biggest, to their broadband, does have multi-day backup power, and it's local out of Salas Abispo. And our fire station has nine days of backup power through propane generator that we have on site. And we're also looking at future cost savings with, by going to a cloud service, eliminating our servers in the future when our servers' lives are complete. Right now, back in 2016, we got a price estimate around $22,000. So we can imagine today, if we want to replace the servers, it would be roughly $30,000. And the cloud service is much more cost efficient and effective for our city. So I'd like to give it back to Mr. Collins, and I'll be open to questions after his presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Excellent presentation. I don't have much to add other than to say thank you for, for putting this together and for staying on the ball and going through the process of having others look at potential proposal. And this does sort of come on the heels of a prior project we had been, had considered with Digital West that was a bit more expansive. So this is more of a slimmed down version of that. And it could have potentially allowed them in the future to expand offerings to other consumers in the community, whether it's business owners or residents, and provide more competition with existing internet service providers. So there could be another benefit to our community. But largely, this is about ensuring that we control our costs in terms of how we're connected on an ongoing basis and ensuring that we are online and able to serve our community during power shutdowns and other emergencies. So with that, I'll turn it over to council for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, Chief, for the excellent overview and presentation, and for your staff report as well. Let me open it up for any council questions. Council Member Davis, sir?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Heller, any questions?
Yes, Chief, thank you for the presentation. Very clear. I appreciate that. Frankly, I'm a little confused. I'm at a loss as to how the broadband system that you're talking about is going to keep our electricity on. I mean, is that completely unrelated? Is this primarily a communications network that you want to help us through emergencies? Is it related at all to us keeping our power on during PSPS's and how?
Well, right now, if our power goes out, all of our infrastructure for our information technology and our phone systems at city hall, which does not have a backup power generation. And so when the power does go out, all the city phones go down. And then also all of our servers for all the computers, including the ELC, goes down also.
So it would be, I'm sorry. No, you, Chief, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's the main reason for this, to make sure that we can stay open as a city and still function up to four days.
Okay, so the fire department now has a generator, right? I believe you said for nine days. Is that what you said? Or any of the other city facilities have generators? And if not, isn't it an option to provide generators to those buildings as opposed to installing a fiber network?
Yeah, you certainly could do that. We did, we sort of did a cost, a cost analysis of that and felt that it was far more expensive to supply generators versus using an existing generator system. And as I mentioned, the Digital West had looked at a previous project with the city, far more expansive than this one. So this is a scaled down version. It allows us to convert all the IT systems over into the fire department. It also allows us to work with the system that they're building, that Digital West is building, to provide a service that we already need internally, which is our INET, which is, you think of the internet as juice coming from the outside, and then once it hits the city, then there's a network that connects all the city facilities, which is a different system. They're providing that service at a reduced cost than would normally, if you were to go out to the market, the monthly cost would be much higher than what they're providing. So it sort of gets us an economy of scale to connect all of our, our facilities together and provides the opportunity, when the new wastewater treatment facility goes online, to be able to connect out there as well. Not necessarily through broadband, but through wireless technology, which is a new, new technology available that allows us to save significant costs. And so Digital West is in the forefront of, of those technologies, and it's a good, good time to jump in that partnership. So we're, we're killing a lot, a lot of burns with one stone, in a manner of speaking.
So thank you for that. The other question I have is how does this relate to possible future 5G networks in the city? And is this redundant to that? Is it better than that? What's the timeline for that? How does that, these two have, do they have anything to do with each other?
Not necessarily. You know, we would need the connectivity internally, which would probably not rely on a, a 5G system to do that. As far as, you know, consumer products out there, you know, Digital West is operating in that, that market. And I, you know, I think they're utilizing the proper technology that's available at this time to, to be able to build their own network. The network that would be available for other companies, they're not a closed system, which is, is another plus, so that whatever they build can be used by, by other, by other entities. But I don't think it's necessarily competition with 5G, as far as I know. But I have limited understanding, to be, to be frank, about this whole thing.
Well, you have a lot more than I do, I'm sure. Thank you, thank you for that. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Councilmember McPherson, questions?
Yeah, actually, I had a couple that were answered by the chief earlier today. I wanted to make sure that this price, which was quoted in November of last year, is still valid, and it is, he told me. And that spectrum was not interested, apparently, in bidding on this. But the question that came up during the presentation has to do with the connecting to the new WRF project. Since this is a five-year contract, it includes connection to the old treatment plant, which will go offline during those five years. Does that price include connecting to the new WRF?
It counts for the existing, and then, you know, we, we will have the ability to do it with the, with their system to connect to the other ones. There may be incremental higher costs. Once the new system comes online, that being the new treatment plant, that's unknown at this time, and that's certainly something that we, we could, we could do once, once we hit that mark. But we would probably be able to relinquish the connectivity to the wastewater, the existing wastewater treatment plant and save some money that way. But there could be an incremental cost increase, but it wouldn't be significant from what we understand.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
No, I don't really have any questions, but thank you for the work. I know it's been an ongoing topic, and I will just remind the public that we'll be together on the 21st at four o'clock, barring any other issues that come up in the fire prevention world. And if people want to continue to ask questions, I'm sure you'll be happy to answer them there. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I'm looking clear to the 21st.
Great. And thank you. And I have no questions, Chief, and/or Mr. Collins. And I think with that, I'll open up public comment. Public comment is open for item C dash two on our agenda. Any member of the public wishing to access Zoom, please do so now. And Madam Clerk, do we have anybody in the queue?
I do not see any raised hands at the moment there.
Okay, with that, I will close public comment, bring it back to council, and I would be happy to entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to make one.
Okay.
I move that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contractor agreement with Digital West to provide broadband internet services to support regular city operations, as well as continuity of operations during prolonged power shutdowns and other emergencies, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson for the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion?
Comments, if I could, Mayor.
Yes.
One of the things I talked about with Mr. Collins, you know, as a result of the pandemic and the economic strain that we're all going through, is looking at how the city actually operates. How much physical space do we actually need? Are people going to be asked to continue to work from home perhaps in the future? I know private entities, major corporations are looking at these things. And I think this city needs to look at these as a way to reduce costs and also deal with a possible universal change in, in how we work. I think it's premature, frankly, to be investing money in infrastructure to facilities that we may not be using a few years from now. So I, I'm not going to support this proposal for that, that reason. And I hope that we can agendize something to discuss these options in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. With that, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries forward.
Whoops. Great. Thank you for that. That takes us to item D. And again, thank you, Chief. I'm sorry. Wanted to thank you again, and also Mr. Collins for that presentation. Very much appreciate it. That brings us to council declaration of future agenda items. I'll start with an issue that we're currently having in a number of our neighborhoods. That is, there are, because of, as Councilmember Heller pointed out, on a number of beaches throughout California, an influx of people coming in, we are seeing large numbers of RVs simply parking in areas where RV parking is prohibited. And basically, we have a fine of just $50 for citation. And that's a pretty cheap overnight stay. And so there seems to be a proliferation of folks that will, are not adhering to warnings and or fines. As a result of that, it's clogging up neighborhoods with inappropriately parked RVs. And so what I'd like to ask council to have this agendized is to have staff bring back a resolution at the next meeting that would increase the fine, such that we might be able to address the issue.
I'll agree with that.
I would support that.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Any comments, Councilmember Heller?
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Thanks. So we've got support for that. Any other, any other future agenda items?
I do have one.
Yes.
I would like to propose that the council consider an urgency ordinance to freeze the issuance of short-term vacation rental permits until the new ordinance makes effect. And I say this because issuing them will cause more problems that have to be resolved after the fact, as well as the fact that the current ordinance does not include any kind of public health and safety recommendations or requirements for vacation rental owners.
And thank you, Councilmember McPherson. We both serve on the Short Term Vacation Rental Subcommittee. We discussed this earlier today, as we are linked in this issue, and I highly support that suggested agenda item.
I will support that as well.
I can support that.
Councilmember Heller? Oh, you're good. Okay. So we have support for that. Any other future agenda items?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Yes, sir.
In my journeys to LA County, I was struck by the fact that there are huge Caltrans signs with the light bulbs at the entrance to every area down there that say face mask required. I know that this council passed a resolution a number of months ago, strongly urging that face masks, masks be worn. And I applaud the city for starting the Face Mask Hero campaign. However, I believe we need to take a stronger stand on face masks and adopt a policy or a resolution or even an ordinance that says that face masks are required. And I know it's been discussed a lot. It's very controversial, but I think we need to address that and step it up, given the fact that the pandemic is going on much longer than most people think. California's on the watch list. I can't fly to New York to visit my grandkids because they don't want Californians there, which is really what's driving this. So in all seriousness, I'd like to see the council address this issue again.
Do we have support for that?
I would just say that, you know, the governor has mandated masks. So it is already mandated in the state of California, which is why those signs are up by Caltrans. So I don't know that any action is necessary by our council, unless it is just to affirm that we support the governor's mandate, which he has mandated masks are required.
Perhaps we could ask Chris, if you could chime in, would there be added benefit and opportunity to perhaps increase compliance if the city were to do something further?
The issue, as I see it, is that the city council has already passed a local regulation that allows county, state, and public health orders to be enforced through the local code. So the governor's order to wear face masks, as it's written, can now be enforced under local code. So the larger issue is whether or not there's going to be stepped up enforcement by code enforcement and law enforcement within the city of Morro Bay. And that ultimately is a policy decision for the council. And if that discussion were to be agendized on whether or not there should be more enforcement, I would suggest that the chiefs and city manager and staff provide feedback on enforcement options and limitations with resources within the city. But in regards to having punitive measures taken for not wearing masks, the city can already do that, because we've bootstrapped the governor's order into our local code.
Does that include the issuance of, after appropriate warnings, the issuance of a $1,000 fine, as we have with other?
Yeah, it should include that. The local code right now provides for, you know, violation of, of the law. You could issue infr-. You can issue infractions and you can issue misdemeanors. So if the city really wanted to get tough, direction could be given to when appropriate circumstances warrant to issue misdemeanor citations. That, of course, is, again, a policy decision. But in terms of the mechanics of the law, we have already incorporated the governor's orders into our local administrative structure. And so we can enforce the governor's orders and the county's orders with our local law enforcement. If we hadn't done that, then we would be limited to just misdemeanors, because all the state orders can be enforced as misdemeanors throughout the state. But we have the flexibility in Morro Bay of using the different enforcement mechanisms in our code, because we did pass that omnibus bootstrapping regulation.
So it sounds like if we came back with just a reaffirmation of what the governor has already mandated, it does nothing to allow us to increase enforcement. It's just a matter of applying the enforcement to the maximum if we think it necessary.
All of the tools for enforcing the governor's mask order are already available to current law enforcement and code enforcement. The question, I guess, that Councilman Heller is raising is whether we're going to be using, if you will. That would be a policy discussion for the council to engage in.
You cut out, Chris. I'm sorry. Say it again.
Right now, we can enforce the governor's order, the governor's mask order. If we wanted to provide more nuance or more details to it, we certainly could do that at a local level. But the real question is, is a policy issue, whether or not the council wants to have a discussion with law enforcement and code enforcement, local officials, on enforcement of that mask order and enforcing it with citations. I do know that there, again, are limited resources available to our local officers. And so I would suggest that there be a discussion that involves, you know, the chief, city manager, code enforcement. But at the end of the day, it's a policy decision, and it is up to the council, you know, how these laws are to be enforced and really what the enforcement posture is of the city.
So maybe I could just ask Chief Cox and Mr. Collins to just chime in about the need for further policy guidance and what you're currently seeing with regard to compliance or noncompliance with the state mandate for masks.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. We've seen increased compliance considerably throughout the city. As we've discussed before, one of the issues with the enforcement is, as Chris stated, if we go the misdemeanor route issue, that would have to be forwarded through the district attorney's office. The district attorney has made it clear that he doesn't intend to prosecute those cases for mask-wearing. Our other option would be the administrative citation process, which would be, or could be then prosecuted through the city attorney's office. So you would have to weigh out the costs associated with that type of prosecution versus what the citation itself would be.
So I guess, Mayor, if I could just jump in here?
Sure, yes.
What I'm looking for really is kind of an explanation of what we are doing with respect to enforcement. Those are the questions I get from people on a daily basis. Why isn't this being enforced? I saw so-and-so without a mask. So I think there's a lot of misunderstanding in the public with respect to what you just said, Chief Cox, and I think it's important to communicate that to people. But in general, who is, I mean, I know we have this Face Mask Hero campaign with buttons and stickers, but who is actually going out there, if anybody, and talking to people who aren't wearing masks? I don't know the answer to that, and I think the general public doesn't know the answer either, and that's what I want to discuss.
Could I suggest...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me, pardon me, let me ask Councilmember Addis first, and then Chief, go ahead.
I believe our city manager, Scott Collins, has sent out a couple of emails detailing the answers to Councilmember Heller's questions. And if I could suggest that those emails were sent, again, one of the things that I've done is saved those emails and then copied them into information that I felt like was for the layperson that I could then share with constituents who ask me what we're doing. And the response that I've gotten back largely from the public has been very positive when I've detailed out the information that's already been shared with us. And rather than continuing to discuss tonight, if I could ask that those emails just be resent, and maybe Councilmember Heller could take a look at those and then ask questions directly? Because I think this information is out there, and it has been sent to council already.
Thank you for that recognition, and I do agree. I've seen those emails. He has elaborated on the number of citations. Also, there have been aerial photos that the chief has sent via email to us regarding social distancing. So there appears to be information out there, and I would concur, it would be maybe helpful during the city manager's routine reports to just get an update on how compliance is going. But from a further enforcement standpoint, with regards to staff limitations and the lack of any further action probably occurring on the part of the DA, I just don't see bringing it forward as an agenda item will be helpful.
But I do think the public benefits from the information that's been shared, and if each council member were to, you know, read over that information and decide various mediums to share that out. I know I've used social media as well as council email to share that information out and had positive response. I think we could work together with staff to get that information to the public.
Mayor, if I could, I want to make sure that we don't turn this into a discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. Appropriate caution.
We certainly, you know, staff certainly at the direction of council could agendize this topic, whether it's to adopt new regulations or to provide a receive-and-file report, to provide updates on the current status. That certainly could be done, but the public certainly should have the notice that a discussion will occur. So I would suggest that we either move this to an agenda topic, or council members, of course, have the right during meetings to speak for a few minutes and provide announcements and to provide updates and say where information will be obtained. But we shouldn't continue a discussion on this topic.
Thank you, Chris, for clarifying that. I do appreciate that. With that, we do have a recommendation for agendizing it by Councilmember Heller. I'll just ask, support, yea, nay, Councilmember Addis?
Nay.
Councilmember Heller?
Nay.
Then I'll say nay, Councilmember McPherson.
I'll withdraw.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Councilmember Davis, I guess you're with us.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
I do have one more, though.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I'm very interested in the city looking at how we do business, how we're doing business now, how we want to do business in the future, physical requirements in terms of how we're going to work in going forward. And I think businesses are looking at that, and I think public agencies need to look at that as well. And I see it as an opportunity to be creative and possibly come up with some really good ideas on how we can work in the future more efficiently, more effectively than we are now. And I think now is the time to start discussing that. So that's my last future, proposed future agenda item for tonight.
So just to be succinct, you're looking at wanting to agendize, I'll put my camera on here, whoops, agendize a discussion of potential future work changes and/or physical space changes that might be appropriate for the future workplace as a result of the pandemic?
Absolutely.
Okay. Others, chime in, please. Yea, nay?
I will support that.
Okay.
I just don't know if now is the appropriate time to discuss that, because we are beset on certain times about what's going to happen and how long it's going to last. I think it's an important topic that I would support at some future, future council meeting. But I don't know that it should be discussed at this point in time, because I think we're just too uncertain.
Okay. Councilmember Addis?
I would agree with that. I think it's an important topic, and it's come up before about moving space and selling buildings and consolidating here and there. And I think it's certainly something to continue to discuss, but I think right now things are very much up in the air with what's going to happen with COVID. And certainly, I see people using their office space. So I could see it in a far-off future. I don't know where, you know, that it needs to be prioritized right away. I think there's a lot of other things that are higher priority in the moment.
And I would agree with that. I just want to say, Councilmember Heller, I do agree with you, absolutely. I am aware of the agenda priorities that we have before, so over the next few months, and staff limitations. And I probably would support this in the future, but not at present. So without any other future agenda items?
Let me just say one final comment here.
Yes, please.
I appreciate what you're all saying, and my concern is, we're also looking at selling real estate, and I would suggest that prior to making any decisions to sell any real estate, we need to have had this discussion about how the city plans to operate in the future. So that said, I will shut up.
Thank you so much. Anything else for the greater good? If not, we will adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you. Be safe and be well, and good evening.